Thank you. Uh, good evening and welcome to the Thursday. This is June 12th, that must have been. July twenty fourth, oh I should go. Uh, twenty twenty five select one hearing, uh, no, planning board. Starting here. Welcome to the six year planning board, Thursday, July twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Meeting held at the select one hearing in Harrah Tower Hall. It is a hybrid meeting, the general public is welcome to attend the person of this room. Public comment will be available, we can watch tomorrow on the TV or whatever. Um, there is a bunch of degenders, there are second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Uh, I just put the milk, uh, down missing, uh, miserable. Uh, we'll see. So it's just fine for idea, very much. You want a paper?
It's on the bottom.
All right, at six thirty, we have a continued public hearing, special permit. In the Homarong Village Residential Old Lake. But then you need to continue with requesting this report.
I hope to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing with special permit. For South River Marina Development. In the Homarong Village Residential Old Lake District. Twenty one Central Avenue and seven Marshfield Avenue. For applicants, South River Marina Realty LLC. And Newland Street Realty LLC until September eleventh, twenty twenty five. At seven P M and continue the time of action until November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. The applicant should be sent a letter of invitation to complete all letters in form. And be advertised for a public hearing with any parking waiver slash special permit desired included in the legal ad.
Second.
Second.
On favor, uh. Six thirty five, we're having interviews. From also a board member, uh, assuming Mr. Smith.
Uh, I am.
Yeah.
I don't know if you can all over stand here.
Yeah, I actually have to say, you have to be very bottom, we need to speak to that circle on the whiteboard. So everybody can hear you at home.
To that, not to this?
Yes.
All right, got it.
Uh, it's, uh, it's a continued complaint that nobody can hear us.
They have.
Uh, it's really.
Well, when you get that from the.
Will do.
Right behind there.
And this, and this year doesn't like help, so will you, Mr. Smith, let us tell us a little bit about yourself.
Uh, good evening, um, so I am wrapping up my, or I just wrapped up my second year of law school at, sorry, at B C. Um. My. I sort of developed a passion and a interest in criminal law and that's my specialty, but, uh, this last year I got the chance to take. Actually, I've got three courses that are really pertinent to, to, you know, this field of law. Um, I took state constitutional law, I took land use law, and I took local government law. Um, and I, they just struck my interest and it's, it's, it's not, uh, relevant to my job or my expected job. Um, but I really enjoyed all of those. Um, I think, and I know that I would not be the most experienced in any of those fields. Um, you know, if a quantity. But I think it would help me, you know, pick up the vocabulary, pick up the procedures. Like us.
If that might you would watch, you have a planning board, trying to exercise your experience. That's some experience.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think it's, some, some of that coursework is, uh, what could make me helpful or more like make me become helpful faster, but it's also why I, I wanted to apply. I really like all of those field law, especially, um, state constitutional law. And land use law, um, and I think this would be a way for me to continue studying. Um, I've lived here since I was five years old. Um. I, right now, I am in Austin. I am living here full time starting this September. Uh, and gonna be commuting for my third year of law school. And planning to stick around for the foreseeable future.
So you'll be living in Situate then?
Yeah, currently I'm coming back every, every weekend, but, uh, starting September, living in Situate full time, commuting to Boston.
Where are you next to go?
Situate. Sorry, I hope I'm speaking well to you enough.
We can hear you.
Okay, uh.
That's what matters.
Frank, can you give me a hands up if you can hear everybody, please?
Let's, let's, let's make sure that Ms. Schlegel was there, Ms. Schlegel, if you are, uh.
Can everyone, I just, just as a.
I don't know how to give a hand, hands up, sorry.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you, yeah, thank you very much, all right, guys, together. Friends in, what do you call that world? Which one of that world should you jump away? Not the guy, please.
Slaver.
Uh.
It's important this week.
Um, so what is, um. So your background experience is your student, you have some interest?
I'm sorry, I didn't get.
Your background, right now, you don't have any development experience, right now, except for Situate here, that is fine. Uh, so. What are the biggest issues that you see facing Situate?
The biggest issues that I see facing Situate, um. I think the main one is, and I did a lot of, um, writing about this for my coursework, but, uh. I, it's hard as a young person to, I, I guess, find a place to live in. I think the main problem is getting in, right? Um.
How's it?
Yeah, and I know that this, this board specifically, um, has taken steps to address that. And I actually used to work at the river shed, so right next to where that first, um, development went up. So. I guess I'm not coming in from the angle of, this is a problem, I think that, that this board has missed it. I think that this board has addressed the main problem that I have and that I would want to see, to see more steps like that, to reapproach more of Situate. And I know that, uh. I mean, this, this board doesn't do that directly, and I know that it's in the process, uh, about how, uh. I know I keep saying this board, this board, this board, but.
That's awesome.
I, I know it's about the designations. And it's not done better, but I would love to be a part of that, that thing.
So has it zoning, Steve, really? The, the, the differences, the zoning. But zoning is, is, is part of planning, but it is part of zoning, so it's part of all, right, so. So, um, if you, have you. Have your listens to any about. Mission needs, develop a graphic with, or what's, what's on our plate right now?
No, I actually, I mean.
That's all right.
No, I mean, I, I'm, I'm really just, like, I'm really a student of this, um, I'm sort of just dipping my toes in this. I want to, I, I hope that I would be able to learn fast and be experienced, as an alternate member.
So you know that one of our biggest issues that we're dealing with is, uh, sewer, lack thereof, sewer.
Yeah, and I've heard that from sort of talking with people, but I can't say that I, I know a lot about specifics.
And so I know that you live in the general area of Pier forty four, everything going on, it was not the, uh, there. So, in, like, um, the White House, the, all, whatever, we deal with all that kind of stuff, we, you know, these. What seems almost conjectural to a lot of people is very important to us, and so that's stuff you cannot see is much really important to us, I guess, is that the way to say it? That one way, do you have any questions?
Invisible or invisible.
A lot of it is listening to people.
And talk, yeah, and etc, yeah.
A lot of it is listening. To hear what people have to say. And I think that this board, and I've been on, on and off this board. Three days. And I've observed this board. Since nineteen seventy seven, so I have been aware of this planning board. It's, it's a lot of work. Sometimes it's fun, sometimes not too much. And. But I think it is the most important board in this town. Because we are responsible for, as Patty said, zoning, we dealing with. Planning of, we can try and work and make, try to make this work. And just as. Storm of seventy eight, okay, wiped out Cedar Point, houses were on top of houses. Two weeks before that happened, one of the members of the planning board said, gee, there was this big fire down in Brexham. And everything burned, do you think that we should think about rezoning Cedar Point in case something happens? But two weeks later, it did. And unfortunately, Cedar Point. Most of those houses there that we have no control over are monuments to insurance. They're huge. Little houses are gone, and that's one of the things that we, we have no control, we watch it, and we just approve it. And they call it being, it was an accessory apartment. In a house that's how big, sixty six hundred square feet? Yeah. Why? But we have no control over that.
Well, that's a zone, so.
It's a, it, we have no, the single lot. Or whatever, we have no control, subdivision, yes.
So we can't really, kind of, so a neighborhood is tottering opposed to a proposed development, that was open term. So you're ready application, you have to follow the bylaws, and you believe it meets all the requirements. So what we have to do here is we have to rationalize. Are we going to approve or deny this application as best the community can protect the public? So your theory is. Not.
So, and I am on the, on the.
You're on the board.
So I'm, I'm confronted with a project, which I think meets all of the legal guidelines, but is not applicable. Um, I mean, I guess, I, I, I would, if I was in this district right now, I would be asking, so what discretion do we have? When something, when a, when a proposed project meets all the legal requirements? Am I required to approve it? Because if I am, then I, I can't really worry about what, then, so I guess I'm asking you that right now.
You need a little chat more.
What?
You need a little chat more, thick skin, you need a little thick skin, yes.
A little thick skin. No, I'm asking, is it discretion?
You get pieces of the bylaws.
Depends on the kind of application, there's more discretion in certain things. So, yeah, just instant, we're gonna get it up. The floor.
Okay, well, I, in my hypothetical, that's the first thing I do, I try to figure out whether I even have a choice in this at all. If it's not discretionary, then I, my vote is for approving, right? Because that's what I'm required to do.
So another big thing that faces us is how do you feel about the balance between preserving a town's character? And economic development? And believe it or not, people ask all the time, how can we operate a business to town?
Well, I want to point this out, I, I've studied this and I've seen in other communities where preserving the character of a town can be sort of a humanism, right? Um. But I have, just going back to some older, uh, reports from this board again, but, um. I appreciate that, that that sort of phrase means something different to this board, and that there is a genuine concern to preserve the, the, this deal of Situate, not in an exclusionary way. Um, so when you asked that question, I guess it could mean one of two things, is it, are we talking about excluding potential residents? Are we talking about, um, excluding chains or excluding, like, uh, you know?
I, I, for me, of course, it would be about, um. Rewriting zoning.
It would be about rewriting zoning as far as, uh, single family, multifamily, or commercial versus residential.
We did that though.
Let's be clear that we can rewrite it ourselves.
No, we don't.
And right, just the designations that are available, right?
We can propose, yeah, we can. And that is what we do on occasion, is we propose changes to certain sections of the town bylaw. With, based on kind of our, you know, involvement, approving those things. And based on things that change, like state law, right? And the TA communities have changed a whole bunch of things, right? And so, yeah, we're, we're, we're sort of the point of the spear, if you will, and try to drive those legal changes into the town bylaws.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that it always happens.
No.
We can only propose it, we can't approve it.
Yeah, I do want, I, no, I don't, I wasn't trying to be a base of earth, but, um, I guess if it's, if the question is just preserving character versus economics. I mean, I think that you have to choose economic development, because, um, I, just thinking about it, right? I mean. If there's economic stagnation that's going to, uh, damage, maybe destroy the character of any community. Um. But I think it's important to obey those, like, I think it's important not to pursue economic development to the extent that it would, I don't know, replace all of the residents or.
The thing is, Situate in my, hasn't figured out, are we for the residents or are we for bringing in people to spend money in this town? And it's a real issue. And as far as. Keeping the character of the town. What exactly is that? I don't know, it's just who we are. And it is, it's sort of a. It's vague idea, and one of the issues with Situate, you can't get there from here, you know that yourself.
Can't get there from.
From anywhere, we are, like, right, right, it's, you know, we are at the end.
I'm saying train was.
Yeah, and which we, is only.
Real great.
Yes, but we've only had the train since oh eight, and it took forty years to get it back. So.
But we have it.
But we have it, and so.
So you can't get here.
You can't. But in terms of bringing in a business, nobody wants McDonald's, nobody wants a chain, you have, Prandery Ocean Spray looked at us and we were too far. So it's just, it's intangible, we just have to do the best that we can do with what we think we're good.
Well, I have two really important issues, one is, because you're a law student. Uh, what do you consider a conflict of interest within the public ground?
So I'm understanding your question to me, if I'm appointed, I would become, I guess, a public servant, what would be a conflict of interest for me? Um.
Within the public ground?
I, I guess there are a lot of different things that could be a conflict of interest, and, do you mean like, what will sort of be, my definition of?
What could be something that you would think that you would have to accuse yourself of, and so who?
Uh, I mean, I think anything that. I, I think the, the model rules would prohibit me from, and also I, I think there's statutes on this, but, from anything that I would ever direct interest in. Uh, I'm not sure if I'm actually already prohibited from this, but of course, anything that my immediate family, my grandparents also live here, so I would include them. Um, probably anything touching on their property or interests, I would just say, even if I, uh, even if it's not officially a conflict of interest. I would flag that, and maybe want to accuse myself from putting anything touch on, only that.
It, it's a case that pays, that's what, it really depends on what comes out for the board.
But some type of people, people are called to be like this, I'm a librarian, it's not a huge job, it's a business, for me, except I. Just, you know, so it all depends, but sometimes what we should do.
And I think that's.
So it's one of the interests that, you know, that as a student, you look, and I worked in a library, it's my very first job, and you have tons and tons. Case you're here, okay, we're cool. So I'm gonna tell you that this takes, you learn it from, of, of time. This is a, this is a board that very often people come on and do not realize. What your time commitment is. Um. As the chair, and as my personality, I spent about twenty hours of the day working, yeah, that's not everybody, that's. It, that, whatever, you can do, what, when you see it, I, I have to do a lot of stuff too, because I, because I go to law. But it, it requires a huge time commitment. And, and I think that we, people need to be very clear about this, um, the last few people I've had didn't realize how, how much time I was taking. And, and, um, and not, obviously, I, I, we're all agenda, too, you find a paper, so that's all I, 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 I just watch TV.
I'm looking at that, I mean, I, uh, don't think it's in the application materials, but I spent at least one semester, I think, I think just one semester, um. Doing twenty hour bartending, um, and I don't know, this is something that.
Yeah, I kind of finished, I think so, yeah, I remember what you said. Go, go ahead, yeah, so you did, okay, so you did work while you were asleep.
I think that, uh, ten hours or even slightly more, um, I'm sure it's different week to week, right? But, um, I would, I would be comfortable with that.
Yes, right, so the alternate member is a position that if, um, if, if a voting member can't vote, the alternate member is called up to vote. So it's not, it's not a position that just sits there and does nothing, they participate in conversations. The planning board meets the second and fourth Thursdays, and we have very full agendas that will change during November and December, depending on what the holidays are. But the alternate members, the board treats the alternate member just like a member of the board. So there's prep work, and the second and fourth Thursdays, you know, the board expects the alternate member to be at all meetings.
So if appointed on a weekly basis, I should be preparing as if I, I, I wouldn't be getting any.
Because you are recording all the social.
You are.
All emails, everything, everything, you're W B K A, and you're just, you're just out there. Do you have any questions for us?
Uh, actually, I was going to expect how much time I should expect to, to commit.
I guess, and I, I think, um. Depending on, on, on the voting curve, which was a huge issue that it is around, um, and how much that you are, no, I know what's happening. None of us came here to go to school to complain, but that was, well, I'm aware of, I, I just, so, like, I would. Like, it's just, you know, he's in there, but, um. So if you were not, we have several kids, which we have to look at everybody. Um, and if you want, not just, that does not mean that you shouldn't do it any day and everything else, I'm sure that you know that there are a million. Commissions, whatever they call them, this town, well, also, is everybody jealous of you for, for help, I mean, help is needed every week, it is absolutely, I don't know.
I saw that the zoning board did.
Yeah, there's zoning, there's, there's all this conservation that we have, we have forty four, and we've got a modified Lincoln, we've got over the fields, and we have recreation, you'll see. This, this E P C, I mean, this kinds of stuff, so, uh, while I appreciate your ability to come and put in this type of work, uh, don't feel that this is the only place we are in. With, near or, or absolutely. Genuine by any, anything else, we all touch on each other in some ways.
Sorry, this is actually, um, so I, I found out about some of the vacancies only after I applied here, uh, so I should ask. If, uh, not appointed, when, when would I know? Because I see that the deadline for the zoning board of this, which is similar field of law and something where I'll apply if, uh, not appointed here. Um. Would, would I?
When, when would you know, and to review all the areas you would be told?
In the next month, in the next, in the next month, the planning board really wants to get an alternate, alternate number on board, yeah.
Within a month.
Okay, so just, um. Sort of, just keeping.
There's nothing in the sentence, yeah, file on application, that's.
Right, yeah, definitely.
God, that, that, uh.
Don't feel like you're limited to one or two, okay?
Yeah, well, if you wanted to go to zoning, you'd want to.
Do what you can, do what you think you can.
The other thing is, if this is really an interest of yours, attend the meetings, just be here, listen, and if you are, try to ask questions. You want, so, and.
Great.
Okay, so anything else that we can do for you?
Um. Sorry, but if you just have a, a pen or anything I could write on?
I do.
All right, thanks. Wait, can I just keep it for the duration? All right, thank you.
So it's one of my.
It'll be nice.
No, that was it, thank you so much for considering the application.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, yeah, like I said, it's, uh, you're here for us, like I said, uh, within a month, and, um. I look forward to seeing you here, town meeting, anyplace else, I want to go, not meetings, you should, I want to everybody, everybody. All right, thank you very much, have a nice night.
All right. Well, thank you, I'm just gonna sit down.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Great. At seven o'clock, I can begin the public hearing. A major side play review of the storm on my program for seven ninety nine, seven, I can't even talk anymore, seven ninety nine, eight old street country, and assesses F O. Y twelve, yeah, P S thirty place, twelve dash two, yeah, thirty four, yeah, thirty five, good evening, gentlemen, I'm listening.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello. Hello, what's going on? I'm here tonight, Mr. McGill.
That's me.
Thank you.
I'm good, how are you?
I'm good.
Um, Paul Seabird is on vacation this week, so Kevin's gonna be, uh, welcoming us to your bed.
And what's your name?
Kevin Brady.
Atlanta.
So I want to ask you, I know you're very soft spoken, you need to yell at the meeting, everybody yelling, that does not work, that, 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 you have to talk to the circle, the auto, the apple, whatever it is. Right? So tell us what's going on.
So, uh, as Dawn had indicated, Paul has been managing the project, I've been overseeing it, I'm well aware of. Uh, everything that's going on with it, uh, he may have more finer details than I do, but I've been overseeing it, I'm well aware. Uh, the last meeting, I understand that the largest point of discussion was, uh, regarding the manholes and the piping in the street. Uh, do you need to point that out or anything, if you, if you recall, uh.
I think we're going to need an extensive discussion on the drainage, so I think that it's probably, is it a fan? Okay, show us where, where, let's sound into it.
And first.
So, I would, just a little background on, um, so, last week, is it this week? The Monday, it was Monday.
Just Monday.
So Monday, a month ago, uh.
Something like her.
Well, Monday, I, um, I went out with, um, Hoadley, who jetted, uh, the towns during these lines, and. We were, the lines that ran in the first street, Karen was there, a representative from D P W was there, and, uh, so we checked, they were clogged, that's. They were stuffed, um, they weren't working, so we ended up, um, jetting them, cleaning them out, so right now, everything is.
So. So the, the discussion was that these manholes aren't working, there was puddling, there was issues going, uh, on the flooding properties. Uh, we believe that. Changing these minds is going to fix that situation, obviously, if these were completely flooded, you can't get the amount of water created that you need to, especially if you get, get a storm. So, and we were fortunate to find out they were intact, uh, jammed it, and then we'll get it. So, we're, we're.
The catch basins aren't intact.
Well, the catch, sorry, Jay.
The catch basins, they're, they're intact on the surface, but they're not intact in the bottom and everything like.
That's, that's correct, so, so, so they are, they're blocked, they're all blocked, catch basins. There's no bottoms on them anymore, but the, the lines where all the water was flowing. Were, were clogged, that's what was causing all the backup, there was no, there was nothing going through them. Which we jetted, but yes, the, the catch basins, the town, I don't know if we haven't been maintaining them or, or doing what they're supposed to be, but they are not, no, they're old.
So at, at D P W's request, um, applicants. Can work, clean, and, uh, address that situation, our stormwater, galvanization, and this pipe network is part of it, to show that. They function adequately to, to discharge the water through the system out to the, um. Out to the discharge.
That's that final inch of, uh, enter the driveways, is that possible? Yeah, the driveways were an issue for us, right?
Yes, that was the next, uh.
Yeah, but you may have to speak up too.
Okay, I think we're talking.
It's really loud, it is really loud, yes, so we all know each other with this one. So I wonder the end of the driveway would, was a problem.
So the part of this stormwater design is now relying on town drains. Just not capture dioxide, so drain dioxide. Is that a, I guess, thing, or is it a new thing?
So the pre-development conditions, there was houses here. Everything flows from the back of the property on the entryway to this catch basin today. Our job was to show, in post-development condition, we're not increasing the rate or volume to this catch basin, which our calculations show. So we've reduced the rate and volume to this catch basin. Apparently, it just goes overland to the guideline, down the street to the catch basin, and then out. We have an issue in the post-development that we're offered to build a sidewalk across here. And we no longer use the water run overland off the grass, because we don't want the water pour off the driveways to sheet. We tried doing an infiltration trench and, um, and, and that would, and some, and so, some storms let water cross the, uh, sidewalk, which was discussed in the board and your area, they were, that, uh, didn't agree with that scenario. So, then what we proposed is actually tying in to this catch basin under the sidewalk. So we no longer have discharged overland, it's contained in a pipe instead, so it's keeping this, uh, stormwater from running over the sidewalk and causing freezing issues. And again, we're doing that in a in a conscientious manner. We, we tried to do it overland as it is historically today, but because now we're putting in the sidewalk where we can't do that anymore. So the next solution is put a pipe in, mortar it, and go. Uh, and same, same place it's going to that, so we're not gonna overburden what's already there. We've re, we've reduced the amount of water going through.
So I'm sorry, where, I, where's?
So this, uh.
Over the catch basins, you say, instead of overland? What, what are you thinking?
So, we're proposing, um, trench grates, half a lot on it, to catch every little bit of water we can get, uh, that's on the property, from the manholes. Um, the only thing that will go overland is the aprons that are off the property, so water will end on the apron slash sidewalk. Wait, that's a rough, they're low.
The lower sidewalks, yeah. Create a, 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 yeah, ties to the.
Yep, exactly, that ties into a oil and brick separator, and then to the, uh, catch basin. It's a singular pipe, yeah, so it's clean water, it's like two B M Ps prior to discharge to that, uh, manhole.
Mr. Jeff, why don't we, why don't we kind of go issue by issue?
Okay.
Let's get this whole issue discussed before we move on to other issues.
So this issue here, we're gonna move on to another one.
No, I wanna, I wanna discuss some issues before we go.
Yeah. So.
I'm guessing.
Are you all set?
I think so.
Okay, so, let me come up here. So, um, just, I'm gonna broaden on the stormwater a little bit, but basically, so, um, based on my observations and review, there's a couple of things. One, the, uh, I'm gonna not talk about this yet, I'm gonna talk about the basic modeling, what I think there's some issues to still get on that.
But now we're gonna talk about this part.
We're gonna talk about the drainage.
Drainage, drainage.
Because it's all interrelated. I mean, we can just, I can just talk about the pipe and then jump to the other stuff if we'd rather.
The drainage has got to turn to the.
It's all interrelated. Okay, so, I was out there during that major storm when they closed down three A. And they had been rerouted, so I ended up here. I was coming from the north, and TV both. It's in my, in my car. And I did, and I, I was, and that storm happened after you TV'd. Not when I cleared it.
After you, yes, after you cleared it, before we cleaned it.
Yeah, so, what I observed is the drainage system needs to be actually, they weren't flooded or overflowing. There was water in the low squad, there was water running in. I believe this area, and I asked for detailed backup on how they got this, I believe this area in analysis, the lower area is underestimated, which I made it before, of the whole front. Based on my observations of where water was, it wasn't full of water, it was water in the lowest spot. But water actually from the street was running into the site. Right, right in this area. I mean, I went out, drove by, because it was on the way, and I'm like, I'm driving right by here, let me take a look, because it's all this discussion about this drainage. So one, so first off, I mean, this area is underestimated, I asked for backup, have we gotten it yet? So I think that's a factor, because that will result in a little less runoff to the street, because this is a pawning area existing currently on the site. The model also has some inconsistencies. The existing proposed case model was catch basing differently, so the model needs to be corrected, they have it the same. The existing case, there's two pipes in here, a high one and a low one. My understanding is the low one was fully flooded, because that, when we pulled it, the low one was, low pipe, it was, all the stuff.
They were both flooded, yeah, but if there's only, coming, coming across the street, there's only one.
It shows two on here.
There's two, there's one down low, but it doesn't go anywhere, I think, I think they replaced it with an eight inch. Somebody bit it patched up and replaced it with an eight, an eight inch PVC.
Higher than the twelve inch?
Yes, higher than.
So the twelve inch you couldn't clean?
The twelve inch doesn't go anywhere, nothing. So they must have at some point.
When you TV'd, they must have opened it up enough, because the, uh.
Well, they opened the.
When they TV'd. Yes, they must have opened the eight inch enough when they TV'd it, because it flowed. I was expecting to see flooding everywhere, considering the roads were all stopped during that rainstorm. No, this was, this branch, this countryway was okay.
I don't know where the water's going.
Well, it seemed, a lot of it, a lot of it went into here.
Yeah.
Not into here, came right in like here. Uh, so that's something to, to deal with, but I was kinda happily surprised to see that it wasn't all flooding over into the guy's lawn. Because that's what we planned to happen, and it didn't happen during that particular storm, which was, I think, I don't know what we got in North Stituate, but I think in Ohio, I think it got like six inches.
I'm on several of the hot ones, but mine.
Years that we had. In a short, short period.
Yep, all the way.
Anyway, so, those are some fundamentals that need to get dealt with, um.
All right. Uh, but we're gonna, so, you're gonna move on to a separate issue, or you?
No, I'm talking drainage, I'm gonna continue on the drainage, I wanna start with the law.
All right.
And then continue, we're talking about the other, those, the other issues, there aren't that many, but those are, not insignificant in my opinion. So the drainage system is catch basin, catch basin, catch basin, and out through the wells. Typically, you require to tie in a manhole, when you tie in, there is no manhole here. But in my opinion, and again, I work for the board and bike charges, what is the maximum usable compliance for something? My recommendation would be to tie in over here, because that's the last thin line. Rather than tying in here, where you're gonna make all the water go through every catch basin. Our standard practice is to have catch basins be offline and not linked together. Every catch basin, then a manhole, is the catch basins as opposed to collect the sediment. Which obviously, if they collected the sediment, it's not getting cleaned up towards the pipe. Whereas if you have other pipes, it would only go up to one, that one, so it makes sense to me to do that. My suggestion in the, um, and it's obviously up to the DPW, so they're gonna end up being the final arbitrator of this and deciding what they will approve. But historically, they like a manhole, and my recommendation would be to convert this to a manhole. If the structure isn't falling apart, you could just, especially if it's a catch basin, probably just pour concrete in the bottom and put a good cover on it. But you would end up having to have a catch basin. And I think you could fit one, this is off the roadway, it's actually, it's, it's in the right of way, but it's not on the, when you got a line at the edge of the pavement, it's up here. So if this is the edge of the road, catch basin's in here, it looks like it's in the gap part. So, that was my recommendation, but ultimately, I think what you need is you need to have them get together with DPW and come to a solution that DPW agrees with. Um, because I really don't have either a vote or a staying with the DPW. But I just, I do recommend you, we did the same thing at, uh, three forty, can it, they had to put in manholes, they had to put in. Uh, and they did some of this work on this, because they did add trench drains, and they did add the oil grid separator. Just to finish the drainage issue, because I think it is the biggest one, and we're not gonna solve it tonight, because DPW is gonna have to, um, ultimately approve or not approve, whatever they propose, it's not up to, you know, I guess, the board could say you'd like this, but I think the DPW is probably gonna come up with their own, whatever it is. But what they did do, like Kevin said, they had a trench drain here, trench drain here, these are pipes, doing oil grid separating, and it goes into the catch basin. The other thing about this, this is, there's a much lower inver, there's a lot more liquid. This one has a pretty shallow inver, so you don't have as much cover, you don't have as much space. You got almost over six feet from the rim to the inver over here, so it's a lot more pitch, it's a lot easier. To me, that's why that seemed like the place to go. What it ends up being.
That you hit and cut across the road.
Right, correct, you have to cut across it. If you do a straight shot right into it, this could easily move, and that would work. Last drainage comment I just was gonna say is they still need a waiver, because they can't catch from here down on, on driveway, just like two, uh, three forty can. I think it's a justifiable waiver in this case, there's no way you can infiltrate the front, but they do need the waiver, and they haven't yet, they're missing. It's treated, but it's not treated, you need to have an inch retained and infiltrated, that's their file, so you need the waiver from the file.
You, you need to have a letter form, or can we request it for a move?
You put it in, you have to put it on, it goes on the plan and the whole thing. So, I believe.
Send an email, so.
Ultimately, it has, it's, it's, yeah. So, um, there was one other little modeling error. This one, the infiltration system, and it's in my letter, you know, I don't need to get into it, it's a simple fix, I think you changed it, I don't know why you changed it. But I just, yeah, um, otherwise, the system's basically the same, you have two storage things here, it's very tight. So that, my letters, you know, there's not a lot of room, if you ever had to fix it. These are a little better, because they're a little further from the building, so they're a little tight. Um, and, you know, the structures are right up against it, so it's, it's a, you know, it's a lot of squeeze in here. Um, it's problematic, because the site slopes from the here to here. So, all the water goes to the front, but you have to be checked up, up in the back, and water doesn't flow uphill, so, uh, I think that's pretty much the drainage.
All right, so, I'm just gonna, before Kevin goes, I'm just gonna give my update as well. DPW will not approve the system as designed. It ties into town drainage system, and so DPW has to give approval for that. DPW thinks that the engineer needs to propose a solution that works. Okay, that's my latest conversations with Mr. Cafferty today. Mr. Cafferty said they sent several, uh, they're working on cleaning out the, the end of the pipe where it goes into, um, the, the wetlands, the discharge point. They're hand digging that out so that it will be clear, but the dis, where it all discharged, it clung up, because it was all full of, the end is all full of sediment. So, they're trying to address that portion of maintenance, which probably hasn't been done in eons.
That's their responsibility.
Yeah, maintaining the town drainage system is the town's responsibility, yes.
Well, let's say you can get someone to pay for it.
So are you, so let me ask you this. Uh, they are seeing that that connection be made, well, by the applicant?
They're asking right now, that what, what is proposed right now doesn't work. And Kevin Ca, they will not, DPW will not approve the plan like this, so they're asking the engineer to come back with another solution.
A solution that does not involve the tied in town?
No, I don't know, I mean, if.
So what, what is he asking, I mean, this is.
If the solution, if.
That's where we are.
If the solution that, that ties into town drainage is different than what is there, and there's the capacity and everything, that by the three forty can it, I believe they will approve it.
So, but they're willing to accept the way it is now, which is exactly how it. No, I mean, the existing system before they developed, is tied into the exact same spot.
Um, I mean, right now, there's a pump running from the house into the catch basin, I don't know, that's really the thing that's.
What's wrong with it?
It doesn't everything great in that catch basin.
Well, or the low squad within the site. And then ultimately, actually, it actually, it all flows, like I'd have to move to the next pond out of it.
We actually saw, and Karen saw this as well, there's a sump, um, there's four in the basement, and one of them with water running from the house into that lower area, not from the street into that lower area, but actually, a sump from the house is filling that area. Uh, so, uh, the, you know, I know what the, the.
Can we stay on the, uh, DPW topic for, for a minute? We, um, as the design engineers, uh, and representative, have not heard that from DPW, there's a, there's a disconnect, we, we, we don't know what they want, it's a mystery. Yeah, we're proposing a real viable engineering solution, and I explained to you guys a few minutes ago how we've done the analysis. And we're showing we were delivering less water to that same spot. Um, we're doing underground to, and we're building a sidewalk. We think that's a very viable solution, send less water to that same location. Um, in a manner that the board has requested, that we don't let water go over the sidewalk. Now, it's a, a solution we just got on an email, um, today or yesterday, that it may be better to do a manhole, um, change a catch basin or manhole that happens to be across the street, and then put in another catch basin. That's, that's the sketch we see.
That's the sketch John came up with this morning.
Yeah, it's a second question, hold on, I'm not done, I'm not done.
John came up with this morning. Jonathan Cafferty is still expecting the design engineer to submit a, a solution that will work.
If I can, if I can say something.
Okay, can I say something? Commissioner Cafferty.
I don't know, what is it, we'll get that, and that would be a challenge.
As I can explain the sketch.
Okay.
That was, that sketch is the drawing of what is in my letter. It's not news, it was in my letter, I suggested that. It wasn't understood, it was easier to sketch and explain what was in my letter, that's the purpose of the sketch.
Can I say something? So, Mr. Cafferty, um, had said that, oh, he thinks I should do an earlier email, what that sketch right there. Well, yeah, because then the applicant, which is me, is paying to upgrade the town system, the manhole, and be paying for it. That's gonna get, the whole road's getting wrecked up when they do the sewer. They're gonna, they're, then I'm paying to do work in the town, in the street. There's utility pole right there.
Yeah.
I don't even know if that's a low point, like how far, and I'm getting, it's gonna be at least, I mean, police detail's loan will be ten thousand dollars. So, you know, I ended up paying fifty thousand, I just paid, I just offered to build a sidewalk for the house next door, and I'm offered to put a sidewalk, I agree, you know, agreed to board to put a sidewalk down on the whole front of my property, which isn't even on my property. It's in the same road, so, it's just take, 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 and there, there comes a point that people complain, a lot of the houses plus a lot smaller.
You know, yes, you don't have to sit with the other sports. I, I totally hear what you're saying, and, and it is that E word, and I totally agree with that. Um, I draw the problem personally, that we are asking the applicant to maintain a pipe that the town's supposed to be taking care of. That's my personal opinion.
Just another note on this design that I, I find a small issue with, is converting that catch basin to a manhole. This catch basin right now, it should be in a low, it's in the low point of the road. We turned that into a manhole, now I have to create a low point, how far, we have to cut, uh, and work these guys next to their driveways, and they have a lot line, and they have this utility pole, to make sure that the water is getting into this. That's a whole nother issue. Just, it just keeps expanding the work over here. And I'm working on the town infrastructure. How does that work? I don't even know how that works.
We need to get back to my notes from there. Couple of.
So, the bottom line is, we're not gonna resolve this issue tonight. The bottom line is the applicant needs something different than DPW will accept. Perhaps they need to write a letter with all the things that you said tonight, that you're decreasing the, you know, the, the capacity, you know, the, the flow to the catch basin. Perhaps you need to actually spell that out in a letter to DPW, and you're going, you're gonna have to get the solution with DPW.
Okay.
And they will not approve it like this.
Yeah, we certainly haven't had a good back and forth with them, and this, the process is muddy. You guys have a process, we know what it is, the issue was brought up, we've contemplated it, we've analyzed, looked at, what we can't get to is to get.
Get those guys to talk to you.
Yeah, and you guys to say, okay, they're, they're over there, you're here tonight, it's like a, it's just running around in circles, so.
Tracing details. I'm trying to get comments from DPW, they're always, it's, it's really like, bulky.
But if they don't have to admit that, forcing them to do all of this miserable work seems excessive, right?
And over us.
Maybe the town should put something in here, maybe they should do manhole or catch basin. They should take out a pipe that goes over or something like that. But it seems like, you know, it's, you know, to have them build all this infrastructure, particularly because, you know, DPW has not been maintaining the infrastructure they have in, in the ground. I mean, it, it's not their job to maintain towns' infrastructure, and there's a, if there's an existing connection to it.
Agreed, but.
That is already approved, then.
No, no, there's no existing connection that's approved. There is no existing connection that's approved.
There's an existing connection that exists.
There's an exist, there's also discharge with the sump pump going into the catch basin. There is no connection that's been approved.
It's overland flow.
It's right.
Isn't that connection, yeah?
Well, it's not a direct side connection, but the, uh, those.
Well, people, it's overland flow going into the catch basin, right? Isn't that where it's going?
Yep.
And that catch basin is supposed to work, right? And it's the town's job to make it work.
Yeah, I, I'm not disagreeing with, we absolutely not disagree with you at all. And I'm arguing that point, I get nowhere. I mean, so, it's, I think that if you try to propose a solution and you write out why, and that the pipes do have capacity, you know? This is stuff that they're gonna wanna see, and you're gonna have to just deal with DPW.
So if, if I, if I say, okay, hypothetically, I say, okay, I, you know, we all know that this street or if this sewer goes through, it's supposed to be going through, it goes through, they're gonna group up the whole road. All these are gonna have to be replaced. Eventually, they're gonna, DPW's gonna have to replace these any, what's there. So if I offer and say, okay, I'll give you X amount of money, five thousand something towards my pipe going across, and DPW says, no, the only way we'll approve it is if you replace that manhole, what happens to the?
Except if it's next to me, then how do we?
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, and not only.
Well, we're deferring to the.
Oh, no, DTW.
DPW, sorry.
So how do they, they only want that, if they say, no, we're dealing with, with Mr. Chesty's suggestion, the manhole, where does that, so I'm just talking, we put a manhole?
We have to have another conversation with them, okay?
Yeah, you guys got to try to work it out with them.
Yeah.
I mean, we're.
As, as Karen said.
At least they're, if they were sitting here in this room to do it now, yes.
But also, no, we, originally, they, we didn't get responses from them until after the first meeting, so.
Oh, I, I've been begging for comments for, on this new set of plans, I've been begging for comments, and, you know, I just don't get it. Because, I mean, it's not fair, I mean, we're, not fair to the applicant not to get comments.
We ran into the same thing at, uh, the other one down the street, uh, right on the pass line. We had a discharge, we asked if we could, uh, put a pipe in. They said, if you, if you fix the old drainage system in the street, so then we just discharged overland, because there wasn't a sidewalk situation. So when overland is like it did before, and DPW was hard to work, it took, took a long time.
But this situation is different, that I keep making that point as well. They're gonna put a sidewalk, wait, they're gonna continue the sidewalk down to, um, and from seven ninety-three, if, I mean, you're willing to take out the shrubs.
Yep, and I started to all that.
And so, I've had a preliminary conversation with the homeowner, and I, I think they're gonna let the town take the tree. I'm gonna confirm, I'll confirm next week. But, I mean, they're already doing a lot for the town.
Yeah, at least, there, there's not even for me, for me to say that, not doing too much, but absolutely, yeah, I've said that to the homeowner. Uh, I, I don't think, I have to go, and I doubt Kevin Ca is gonna listen to me, but to go in to say, you know, I'm sure he don't think it's fair that you're asking applicants to do major infrastructure where the town, they were responsible for. Yeah, and there's not, there's not a lot of support for me on, on the business side.
So, let me answer this question. Absent an agreement, we can, what is the drainage solution? Is there a drainage solution? I mean, you could pipe out, you know, and the sidewalk can, and all that kind of stuff.
You really, I mean, you really. You really can't discharge right into the road, that's what you have to do.
But how's it doing now?
It, it isn't concentrated, it just flows off the land, it's different.
That's what I'm saying, is that this will flow off the land to the.
But it's more.
It's different than a pipe, than it is.
I'm not talking about that. I'm just saying, if you don't have any of these pipes, right? Can this drainage be done?
No, because you have certain requirements when you increase the impervious area, that you have to take care of the rates, you have to take care of the volume, that's the goal.
But I saw what you were.
Building bigger, so you build a bigger project, you have more runoff, you have to deal with it.
No, no, I get that, but I thought, the beginning of this, that the volume and the velocities were lower than the existing condition, is that not true?
Well, but it's still concentrated together at a pipe, so the, a lot, and there are some issues that still need to be squared away with that. Let's say that is correct, then you still have to connect it at the pipe, because of all these things that are doing the drainage controls outlet through a pipe. It's different if you have just a lawn sloping into the.
So, who got rid of the sidewalk?
Yeah, it's missing.
We have a lawn, if you're gonna add it to the.
I mean, I'd like to see a sidewalk, but, you know, it, it feels like, it feels like unless you pay the bid here, no way that anything gets done.
And the bid will kill you.
I think this feels, it feels like this.
I do think there is a solution that, it's just that we're not gonna come up with it tonight, DPW, I mean, they're holding the bag at this point, I mean, I mean, I can't.
Would you hold the bag if the sidewalk, if there was no sidewalk, just hypothetically? If there was no sidewalk and the water just ran into the like it is now, would the DPW, would they have?
Well, this is not increasing lots of your volume, I would say it should be fine.
And then it's still after, like, the, definitely, we're gonna have water discharging into the road.
Just like it is.
Yeah, because it's not discharging just like it is now, it's a whole different system. We, two houses, small houses, a lot of.
Right, but we're capturing all that area in the infiltration system.
But you discharge it out of the, I, I think it's all hypothetical, and DPW still would have to look at it, because it's still going in the road in a different fashion than it is. However you do it. We did the same exact thing down the street, at, at the town line, we discharged the pipe at the catch basin, so it didn't run down the side of the road, it just ran straight into the catch basin, and it had no issue with traffic, et cetera, et cetera, right? So it didn't impact the road prior, so let it go there. Our initial design that we, um, suggested was a crushed stone trench, a, a spreader trench, that let small amounts of water go across the sidewalk. Um, and the thought being, it's very similar to water coming off the hill, right? Spread out and discharging, similar to what the condition is today, right? It wouldn't be, wouldn't be as long, it wouldn't be the entire front, it would be some other length, forty, fifty, sixty feet, whatever it was. And when that infiltration trench finally filled up, it would let water go across. Uh, problem was that it was suggested that that was a freezing issue, I'm saying that it's probably raining, and it's wet anyway, at that point, so, um, that, that, that suggestion got thrown out, uh, so we tried this one, piping it on there, which I think is a good solution, it's fine, the infrastructure's right there, we wouldn't have to cut in the road, just, um, pedal hole in the catch basin, motor it up, and follow the path.
Are there two pipes going in to the catch basin?
I think there, yeah, there's a, uh.
There's two pipes going into that catch basin?
Yeah, it's a, um, I think there's some competition, just like we were supposed to.
There's a stop sign, there's a little building.
Uh, there's definitely a basement in the height of eight or three, and the middle one, we don't know if we're gonna put a basement in there.
Cause that wasn't clear on any of the phones, it's not water, so I don't know.
Uh, yes, see, no, there, there's no, that's why that lower one may not have a basin, but we checked, we dug and did test pits, we ran along. I don't think it's had the DPW, whatever, let's put a stop sign in.
There's one. They don't let you do that, it's old, it wasn't.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know what we're about, that's all.
Yeah, but it doesn't, that, that, so, mine those are old, you can't, that's it unless the discharge comes into these standards, I talk about that.
Alright, well, you, you got your work to have for you, you know, maybe.
Thanks, thanks for understanding our predicament.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I think that this is an, an important issue that needs to be solved, because as we all know, most of the street is ready to change. Um, that area is going to be developed. So, the DPW might, I mean, needs to figure out whether we need to put their manholes, and keep their pipes, their, their equipment up to scales. So, well, not to allow, you know, say, well, can I talk to you? It's, it's, if it's not you, it hopefully won't you, but it's one reason, so like, what's the plan, ask DPW for this?
Alright, so our.
So, I would say, I would write up your stuff, send it to me and DPW, I guess what I'm gonna forward on to TA.
Okay.
I mean, because I, I agree.
Thank you.
I agree with you. There's a real issue, it really is an issue.
And all, aside from them, Karen has a terrible, I mean, it's been going on for years to get a response from DPW. I mean, this is nothing new, this is absolutely positively nothing new.
But it's just playing, why don't you get real, ask for a pay one server, they gotta play you. Yeah.
And I'm not looking to get rid of the sidewalk, you know, I did the sidewalk with benefit, my project, so I have it, so I'll willing to put it in, I just.
I know. And so. It's come down to be accountable. Yeah, that's all, to just be, do my job.
They need to do their part, it's right, there, there, there's not a lack of green funds for, and not on the side for that, absolutely.
Okay, so, we will coordinate the DPW, see how much headway we can make in the next few weeks.
Especially.
Yep, Karen. We are going to request a waiver for the one inch, uh, treatment, or infiltration, or capture, from all the pervious areas will add to the plan.
Of the rainwater, is that?
Uh, that was the last thing I wanted to go over. We, we've been working on this site for quite some time, with us and Beck, with John, with Brian, and his law. We see water going, um, off of the pavement and to the low area on our property.
Not asking for a lot, I just, that's an observation, not asking.
Oh, okay.
Don't take the extra road water, I'm just, I'm not asking for that.
Okay, thank you.
But I, but I do think an observation, because I think you underestimated the extent of the low area placement observations.
Okay. We did, when we were out, uh, doing these manholes, we took our survey equipment to the bunch of shots in that area. It didn't change, of course, we have two foot contours, or one foot contours, uh, so the spot, we added spot elevations to the plan that John hasn't seen yet, um, but it didn't change significantly. And, and we explained that, we, we, uh, we prepared a letter, um, already tried to get it together for, I guess we can get this thing to the finish line.
I guess, I, I, I think, the only thing that I get out to guys, maybe you have the work out of the heat, DPW, and that's.
Oh, I don't know, we have more issues to get to.
Yeah, so we. If we can go through the other stuff, then.
We have other stuff, but this is right now, what I.
And actually, resolution.
You, okay. We just, we go back to model, because I, I wouldn't know what side we are making about it, so. Yeah, but I think you gotta do first, uh, see what you get through the DPW before you do anything, because if, if you gotta move the pipe to a different spot or whatever, that's gonna change the model. So there's no point in wasting any time, if you have a specific question on, on my part, I'll. Okay, alright. So you'll be able to, to, the, the camera, whatever, we, we put out, however, it needs to be noticed.
In this case, you can, you can call him directly.
Okay.
I mean, just probably, somebody needs to write me up something accurate, so we know what communication, town roads, what communication is taking.
I mean, there's only a couple of things, it's pretty clear, I, I know sometimes reading the letter in terms of, but I said, maybe it's a little, but, but I think it's pretty quickly easy. Okay, sounds good.
So.
But I can, yeah, once you get into, like, wait until you know exactly what you gotta do from the other end, otherwise it's just.
Another iteration.
And I'm doing another iteration, there's no problem with any of that, I get it, more than I want to do right now anyway. I'm sure you do.
Yep.
Oh, but no, it's, it's pretty cool.
Mr. McGee, I still think you have too much power for this stuff, I still do. And I think it's bad, that you should consider reducing two or three of those parking spots, I, I still think that is, you know, you owe them a fine, we don't want you to go open the fine, if you're a, 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 you're trying to. And I, I know mine, I know what you're saying, but, uh, first of all, I think if message was one, volume of water, you know, that's, that's so, there's so much asphalt there, but I think that that's still a lot of parking for this area.
Parking's always, once, once it's built, and people live there, parking's obviously number one problem.
You're gonna miss those parking spaces.
I, I mean, if I, if I do, you know, if I can do three of them paved, I mean, I gotta have snow storage area, which I have to, to.
I, I don't know.
So, uh.
So what are you willing to compromise, she wants, she wants you to at least take two of them out into the back.
So can I turn two into gravel?
Yes.
But still use them as parking spots?
Yes, no, no, wait a minute, what do you mean by gravel, you mean, what, fresh stone, fresh stone?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, whatever you, whatever's, probably, I still wanna be able to use it as parking spots, or, or papers, can I use papers?
You can use permeable papers.
Yeah, for two stops.
Is it right over the septices?
Uh, yeah, I talked to the side, I think it's on.
Okay, you don't wanna put pervious data over it.
On the septic.
It's close, I've got, I've got another piece of this.
Maybe also, we don't know how to be done, we have a note, right?
I'm, I'm hurting to get right that long.
It's not going. Why it's not going? I don't.
Yep, the last trench is, uh, it's under the edge.
So can you do three solid and two, uh, fresh stone?
Yep, I'm just gonna.
Yeah, but what's the difference between permeable papers and crushed stone, except permeable.
What, what is driving this is the stormwater violation, it's trying to minimize your impervious coverage, and it's a little bit.
The zoning violation actually says you're only supposed to build only what you need.
I don't think it said, well.
Uh, yeah, it does say that, I know, I mean, but we always allow a few extra, because this, this board happens to think that they want, you know, they don't wanna come back, you know? Yes, parking is an issue, so this board, this board realizes that, you know, so.
So, okay, compromise two, two of them crushed stone or whatever, gravel or whatever, whatever you want, and then the rest will be just paved, where I can use a snow, snow storage.
The rest can be here, you have just had plain asphalt.
Yeah.
Right, so the rest, so, on crushed stone, it, you're right, you're right, you're right, the crushed stone.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, we're going, we're walking on the stone. He's very good watch here.
That's it, and now she beat the show.
I know.
Have you, and that's all?
Could be a lot more water, really. There you go.
Actually, I, I think they have used the conservative new rainfall numbers, they're using a type three. Actually, I, I think they have used the conservative new rainfall numbers, they're using a type three twenty-four hour eight point six eight inch storm, so that is, so they have considered that.
Oh, yeah, they, they may not be enough.
I probably have, I have one too, but that's a lot of.
Cause someone have in Texas, right?
That's what, that's what we're gonna change the stormwater bylaw to, I mean, the stormwater rate.
And Metro West has been notified.
Yeah, Metro West put up, I'm waiting, I would say, I'm gonna pay them a deposit until I get the approvals.
Now, I don't have one other thing, which has to do with you, um, peak discharge rate, that one foot or your two inch orifice, not what are requested coverage for, is there?
Which is rarely tight.
What we need to do is, is, is helping us hold that flow. Um, what I suggested, um, as a response to this, uh, in this last letter from John July fifteen, was that we create a emergency overflow, a standpipe that's above the one hundred year storm, that is four inches. Um, it would be horizontal. Um, so if that two inch, uh, orifice got plugged, it would stage up and it wouldn't get over the hundred year storm. Um, but if it goes over the hundred year storm, then it goes through the four inch and out, so it's not surcharging, um, and busting out the system. That, a two inch does help us hold it back.
That, that was just, I know.
It's probably gonna be easier, I will see if I can model the four inch and just be done with it, but it's, you know, where you have to let the water go out slowly.
Is it at the very bottom or is, I don't even.
It's up, it's up, so this, so we do a stump, and maybe we can add a stump to it, which would, uh, settle the, uh.
It would help from a, I'm just for the board's benefit.
It would not.
I'm not trying, but if, if you have a, if you have a two inch right at the bottom, it gets plugged very easily, because the sediment is only at the bottom and there's ice right there. If you do a stump, then sediment, it's, it doesn't take much to plug a two inch anyway, I mean, if you get leaves, if you get debris, then you can have that problem. But if there's a stump, it won't necessarily fill up with the sand and dirt, things like that, it's a little bit better if there is a stump, I don't want your stump is in that like a stump, but.
I know, I look at this too, and.
We, fundamentally, fundamentally, try to hold that water, but if, plus, you've gotta hold that.
All the water, what are you doing, we have a two foot stump.
You have a two foot stump?
Yes.
I thought you had decided to do your bylaws. Is there any this four inch overflow?
So, you would add this up here right above the one hundred year storm, so the regular storms wouldn't overflow it, if this was clear, right, but if somehow it's got plugged, it would stage up and it would allow this to go up this way. Um, so this would, so the system would back up and out of the, uh, downstairs, down the driveway, et cetera, this would be, uh, allowing it to drain out. Then to have started this, we could even, we could even model it, we do a six, I suppose, we have a four inch out, so that would be the control, would be the four inch pipe come out.
That goes into the infiltration, too, that.
Yes.
So, the infiltration essentially would open up some extent of the gauge, uh, probably a fault line. I don't guess.
Right, so.
This big one's gotta back up from the others.
Yeah, the stage. When we do it with a stump, then I was gonna suggest a standpipe for an emergency overflow, if that, that way it's not completely plugged, not working at all.
Right. I would add, yeah, that, it's just two inches really small.
I'm looking. Yeah, I'll look at the four first, if we get that to work, we'll use it, if I can't, we'll, we'll suggest a standpipe.
It's, yeah, it's just kinda small, I, I don't know, maybe this will light fire, maybe you can get me three off streets, what else? Yeah, what else? So, it's more horses, but.
Write, write, write down nice picture. It doesn't go in the catch basin without.
I, I, I know.
And they're retaining it.
Yeah.
Not fixed.
And further up on country way, it's pretty bad, it is, it, it, it's almost like it's down there, I mean, if you're old, so, you know that, and now it's just going topless. Then, uh, yeah, it rose down, mostly because of the EBTX, right, they did all that, they did, they spanned that out.
Sweet, sweet. My only thing is, when you have three linked catch bases, it's best not to put it into the first one of them. Yes, right, I think much better off.
You can go back and.
Right, that's the main, that's the one to other issues, I have a number of issues, and, and some of them are just updates for the, for the, yeah. So, ultimately, there's gonna be two decisions here, one for eight oh three, and one for seven nine oh nine and eight oh one. Today, we just got the, uh, easement descriptions, the master deeds, and the HOAs, I've put in darn comments, my first pass comments to them. And help fix them before they get sent to town lots, and they, I don't.
I just heard you said, wow, she really writes these.
I don't.
She will, uh.
So, in the, uh, in the condo documents, it does say oversized vehicles of seventeen feet can't park in the driveway, okay? And so, I'm asking that we also put in the master deed as well, and there's a number of other issues that are very easily remedy, remedyable. Okay, but those, so we, we got them, that's being worked on. Uh, they've been able to drop the imperious coverage in the front yard by using stepping stones. Is the board really wants stepping stones, because the stepping stones, they're not even, they haven't considered the stone part as part of imperious either. You really want stepping stones for the walkways? I mean, so, you know, you got, you gotta tell them what you want, right now, it still says concrete wall.
Can I use, can we give me, can I use concrete walks?
Oh, yeah, she missed, there's just a, there's just a sidewalk that connects all the buildings to the sidewalk.
Right, right, yes.
Yeah, there's probably no one, it only connects one unit, the front end road unit, there's.
I never use my walkway, I'll run it by my.
Yeah, these are.
It's supposed to be the walkway in the zoning bylaw, yeah.
There is one from the front of the property to the back of the property, um.
At my eight oh three.
Yeah, uh, but the, the walkways, to me, I'll do whatever we want, I mean, we, we show concrete and I change it to, to stepping stones, so we can, you know, meet the coverage area, but if you can give me a waiver to meet the coverage area, then I'll go back to no walkways or.
No need coverage.
Where's the walkway?
These are the, some of the.
Now, these doors in the front only go to one unit, yeah.
Yeah, right, okay.
Yeah.
It's just these little stepping stones, they only go to issue, and issue.
So, it's a trip on all.
Just from the front door to the, to the driver.
This little bylaws require a walkway in front door, or something, so.
I was just, one thought, let me just say something, maybe makes a difference, but I don't know, you, you have to walkway coming all the way around and then you need to do all that, or you need just a walkway from the bylaw just to get to the sidewalk, or is it to get across all the front?
It's supposed to get, to be able to get to a public block, this is.
Or couldn't you just do a walkway, does it, from here, again?
Straight, yes, yeah.
But isn't there a little retaining?
In places, and would that be enough?
Is it, we, is there a little retaining or anything there?
Yeah, so retaining well on the front there.
Yeah, so it would have to be a step, but we.
Well, no, you got one, you got one here. Where's this one? So, you don't get, so the only way, maybe you have to go.
Like, I don't mind.
Here you gotta worry, it helps out, but it doesn't need to go all the way.
I'm just, if I can go straight down to the sidewalk from the front door.
I'm just asking, I'm not, I'm not, I'm asking if that, something, if it meets the bylaw to get you around.
No, I mean, I. If that meets the bylaw, I'm happy to.
So, I was just saying, take another look at it, I know why you get it, to get out of the twenty-five percent, but, you know, I'm just not sure that that's really the fourth ones.
I think it's straight shot, to the sidewalk, it's on.
So, is it stepping stones, we could use it, so it's just a walk, so if we don't meet that.
Then just do steps, doesn't, does that create ADA?
No, because we have ADA access, and adaptable for the other entrance.
So, we just do some steps and, uh, a walk straight down.
So, the one walk on the back, can I say, put the one walk to the, um, eight oh.
Eight oh three all the way down.
Can everybody use that?
Yes.
So, that gives you access from the front to the back, for everyone.
For everybody, everybody wants.
Cause he's gonna allow it where you walk.
Yeah, that's why everybody.
So, then if you had a door.
I mean, no one's gonna, I don't know if anybody's gonna use it, but, but it meets them, it's, yeah.
No one's gonna do it.
So, that, so does that toward the, the door that you pointed out there, that goes into like a lobby?
So, no, this, this sidewalk doesn't go anywhere, it just goes from the top of the property to the bottom of the property.
Right, no, but one, if you get a walkway from the sidewalk in.
Oh, right here, no, this is just the entrance to unit one.
Oh, just.
Just unit one, just directly to the unit.
Okay.
Um, yeah, ADA leads back to you, that's the first floor, it's adaptable.
So, the only thing that I ask is that ultimately, probably we'll have access to one, but if you're gonna, if you really need a walkway to a door, it's gotta be shown.
Yeah, so all the others are right in the, on the driveway side, they, they go right into there, whatever, um.
Okay, so then.
We have two, right, one at the front, the driveway, one to here.
We, yes, yeah, there's two entrances, there's two entrances into, do you mean, the garage is in the front.
There's two, one, one needs to be there. I was a little fired.
Yeah, so there's, yeah, there's, there's two, there's two means to be addressed, uh.
Every.
Every.
The second one on the, first one on the.
Is in the garage, in the front of the garage, second one's in the front.
One, still bit, we don't.
Yeah, we love that. Yeah, there's two, there's two, there's two that need.
Alright, so you will book that, you look at that situation?
Yeah, because then it'll sign that, that's back.
Screenshot, that's a good.
Yeah.
Alright, so, um, the chambers, I assume they're suitable for H twenty loading?
Yes.
Okay. Um, parking, so if they take away, you know, some of the pavement, you're okay now with park, or I said, you already said last time, it's not tandem, so that's how we're gonna go. Okay, parking, um, is the board, the board, I'm just making sure the board has read the plans, there's no fence or landscaping adjacent in the, in the back.
I, yeah, I went down with the guy today.
Yeah.
How close you move to the neighbors?
Who knows, there's a, a cedar living in the other side, but I mean, I don't know, what's that distance from that?
Which, all of them, each neighbor?
From here to, from here to the neighbor, you, you're forty-two feet just from across the, so you're probably a very, I think, pretty far, except under dial, on phase seven.
Uh, the back of the unit is pretty close to the, the back of, yeah.
It's like seventy, it's over, this is probably fifty-five feet or so of this one, this one, this.
Plus, it, it's probably, so, like, the units on the truck, you know, they coming across that, the.
Are there trees in that, completely true? There is a, there's some trees in there, so, so, um, so this is forty, forty-three feet, that's another thirty probably to, this is the, till this built in here, see the, the stack right there on the corner.
I'm just saying, you might wanna add fence or a little bit more screening back there, it's very tight space, but, you know, obviously there's a stone wall there, you're not touching anything on the other side of the stone wall, but you just might wanna add some stuff there. Um.
Add arborite, is it up to your?
Something probably, you know, I don't think that's not your food, not your food, something that's not your food, so I, I.
So, I'm, I'm beside the, that favor, if there's a stone wall that defines, why? Why would we cover the stone wall if arborite is involved in this?
Okay, if you don't want it, I'm just saying.
I, I, I like the stone wall, I just, I like the wall, too.
I like to, I like to see it.
I hate my, arborite's been thirty feet tall, so.
And like, it's like sometimes.
Well, it's a big wall, it's about ten feet that area, you know, whether they can reach.
Natural. I didn't know there was a stone wall, excuse me.
It's not, it's just walk, I mean, it's a lot of stone blocks that are, both the wall and the garbage.
I'd walk, I'll like, aesthetically, you know.
Okay.
Wait. I'm just waiting.
When you got it, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
When you got it, oh.
Yeah.
Thanks, alright, so, I checked in with the board of health today, there's not an approved set of plan yet, and so I'm gonna clarify here, we have fifteen two bedroom units.
Correct.
Correct, that's thirty pages, right?
Yes.
Um, lighting. So, I'll let you do it.
I was just talking about lighting on the building, I didn't put any site lighting around the site.
Okay. Alright. Alright, just building.
Yeah, yeah, just like to, just wants to get in here for.
Just certain.
So, just nothing, not that part?
And they're all assessed. No, nothing's, nothing's up.
Alright, utilities for these, there's, uh, several utilities for these.
Yes, around the, um, around the, uh, they'll be similar, they're not gonna be white PVC, they'll be similar to blending with the building, and that was what the, uh, the design for.
Alright, just, there's no material shown on there.
Yeah, um, cause we have, we have to find, we have to go back to the designer group just to show them sort of color of that.
But, I mean, are, are we talking like, uh, I mean, is it six foot fence, or what, what are you talking about, just, I'm, I'm talking about a basic note of the plan.
Okay, uh, probably just like a small four inch cedar, you know, board, flatboard around the, uh.
Right, so, just some, some note of.
I'd rather. Yeah, okay, I'd rather do a smaller one, just to cover them, because then you have air club, I don't want a basic, I mean, so, four foot, we can, it has to cover better.
Alright, so then we have other waivers that you've already said you don't have a problem with, the, uh, the, you know, the forty-nine percent versus the fifty percent builds is on occupancy, and, you know, the, the, the spaces a little bit in front of the garage, you've said you don't have a problem that did the one inch waiver request, um, I don't know that there's any other waivers.
Oh, yes, there is, the, uh, there's the waiver to submit the affordable documents after, after, spread after, um.
Yes, and I understand that that needs to be brought online at the same time as, yes, yeah, because.
Right, because more than, more than, more than.
Yeah, yeah.
More than.
Yep. Right.
I mean, eight oh three is gonna happen before the, it's all the.
Right, seven, uh, I think it's gonna be at eight oh one, uh, if you didn't do it, that's what I'm.
Go ahead, question, you have that? Um, the affordable unit, well, um, the finishes in the affordable unit be exactly the same as every other unit?
Uh, I don't know if it would be exactly the same, um, because I don't know if eight oh three is gonna be the same as seven ninety-nine or eight oh one, but.
When you talk about the outside unit?
Inside.
Um, I don't know, and I didn't do anything different to the unit at, at fourteen, Whole Country Way, that looks exactly the same as the other ones, so, uh, will they look the same, yes.
In other words.
Well, yeah, yeah, and they're, they're gonna look, and I'm not gonna put in, you know,
Quality, that's not. There's one, there's one box, there's one, so they're all there.
I gotta, yeah. They're all got this, yeah, but I don't know exactly what it's gonna be, and, and then I know I'm required that it can't look any different from the outside, but, you know, typically, if you're doing
Right.
if these are, you know, if the eight oh three is gonna be, you know, million dollars a unit, I'm not gonna put a million dollar cabinet to get it for the main, they'll get contractor grade, they'll still be nice, they're still cabinets, but I'm not gonna, you can't spend. You just, you, you, you can't do it, but I didn't do anything different at the other house, so I'm not, you know.
The other comment I made, what I would make, I understand that it is. The other comment I made, what I would make, I understand that it is, uh, amount of right to put in fifteen units.
Yeah.
And my concern is, just because you have the right to do it and it's generic, if somebody has the right to do that, I think maybe to me, probably, it's a little bit too much.
So.
I'm just.
That I, like I said in the first one, the only reason I bought this property is because there was twenty-seven units planned to go in there as a forty big. And, and, and I paid, I paid as if there were twenty-seven units, they charged me, so I, so I have to, I've already overpaid, but I did it because if I didn't, my building that I had already bought, the five units, they were planning on building right on the property lines, I just.
That was a hypothetical, you know, if you do something, it's that right.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if it's almost better to have a little smaller or.
I think in some cases, but in this case, that did like, it is smaller because I'm not doing a forty big, you know what I mean? I'm not going for the max, I'm not going for any community bonus or any benefit or anything like that, I'm not looking for any of that. It's just the, the asset, right? So, in, in some situations, yes, and, and you know, in fact, there's another project that I'm looking at in town, that we are looking to do a different size, not maxing it out. Um, but in this case, because of the financial, what I had to do to, to secure that land, that I have to put in fifteen units, because I've already also given one affordable there, you know, so I'm actually only doing fourteen. Uh, that's, that's probably affordable, because you can't make any money.
I guess, um, Laurie. I was just going to one line, I was just a genuine guy, that's it.
Not give anything else you need to, whatever you have.
I don't think so. Thank you guys, you covered everything.
I think we got.
Everything.
Which the drainage that we have to work out, that's the one piece we still have to, um, well, besides what we were in, stuff, the other stuff, which is more administrative and all of this stuff, it's more of a, a.
So way, way this is setting up, you know, we're gonna be optimistic, I'm gonna be optimistic.
Yes, that's fair.
And I am loyal to Mr. Mr. I have suggested a contiguous until September twenty-fifth, that is time to resolve the drainage, and that is time to hopefully have decisions for, for the next meeting, and that, precisely, we're a bit way busy in all the other things for that, but that's, that's the philosophy, you know, hopefully, we can get everything done so that next time we can, um.
Look, period.
Put a stamp on it.
And to be looking at a decision.
I, is there a appeals period? There's no special permit, it's a site plan, it's.
Site plan review, twenty days.
Twenty working days, business days, or?
It's twenty calendar days, it's a site plan review and square mark, it wasn't the same.
Calendar. Okay. I just didn't pay out.
No, it's not a nine-day for you.
What's that?
Not nine days.
Okay, it's not nine days.
Are you ready? Does anybody else have anything that we're saying for it? I think we're, I mean, I wanted to, I faced a lot of times, I wanted to get all of my issues resolved.
I'm moved to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing from Major Site Plan Administrative Review and Stormwater Permit to three mountain family buildings in the Village Center and Neighborhood District, North City Village District, Outer Village Sub-District, VCN, NSD Opie, until September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM, and to continue the time for action for five, in the town, until October thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Say second. Second, oh, I thought she had.
We have to ask, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it's your second.
Yes, sometimes it's six, three, I did it.
Okay, I'll have a finger. Alright, everybody has to go work, we got a whole room, you got to.
Just like, I don't like these time, I'm trying to.
That's right.
About the meaning.
It's, I know, but I was like, I was like, I don't fucking have it.
I trust it, yeah.
Do you ever do that?
Yeah.
Dylan was pretty dumb, he's like, that last.
Just kind of.
It is looking like that, like they're not.
Yeah, exactly.
They look fairly similar to that, but yeah.
You know, like you tell, like, yeah, you're wasting your time, and it wasn't.
That's why.
Thank you, July has a lot of issues, right?
Monday, I'll have that, alright, I mean, last time, I mean, alright.
So, okay, alright.
Alright, yeah.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can we take a five-minute recess?
Absolutely, can we get? Move to take a five-minute recess.
Second.
I'll have a favor.
Alright.
Alright, uh, call me back to Oliver.
Second.
Second.
I'll have a favor.
Alright.
Alright, it is now eight ten. Karen, we're all know that we're, uh. Well, we're ahead of schedule because I thought we're gonna, so we, uh, I think here's the public hearing, so the next, the next.
Okay, maybe you should push it.
Yes.
Come on up. I'll move tonight.
Good, how are you?
My mom, my child's a little bit like you, something like your family, that's why.
Yes, Philip Cushing, been a resident of Situ here for about three years now, Whole Country Way, father to three, known children here in town, uh, and I'm a lawyer by profession, um, I'm a partner at a, a law firm based out of Denver, um, and chose to move my family here a couple of years ago, had option to live frankly, anywhere in the country, and, and decided to live, uh, here, so.
Okay. When's like, while you're back for the office?
I, uh, I go back about three or so days a month, so I'm not, not too mad, uh, we still do the, have hybrid approach of three days in the office, uh, the rest not, and so I try to go once, once a week, if you're ever at office.
Um, so.
Just curious, what, what brought you to sit in that of all two towns?
Yeah, of all, of all, yeah, so my wife and I met at Boston College, and so, uh, my family spent about half the year, uh, at K God, and so, uh, we, we loved West Coast, I'm west from the West Coast, I'm from, uh, New York, but we always had this fondness for the Boston area, because of our time there is more looking back as children, uh, and so we came back and, and there was just something, just felt that as soon as we came into town, there's something special here.
Much to get me, can't wait.
I, I, I totally get it, uh, it's, there's something here that I don't see much.
Just like the booth that.
Anymore. But it's, it's special and it just felt so, I, I'm gonna get just out of second, we're gonna, uh, do a third, it was on my way, and raising our kid in a community like this, it was another great, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, one anti-country way, I don't know, I, I don't.
Oh, what was it? I'm sorry.
I've all lived here for like sixty years, one, seventy-seven, gone.
We're, we're at four seventy-seven, so, so that's actually, uh, I, there was all the, uh, that was a development that you all spent a lot of time on, I think, in twenty twenty, actually, it's the merit, uh, the, the former merit property, the five units, uh.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I'm, I'm.
And then the garage.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, back, garage now, now gone.
The garage is gone. And the hallway in front of this company, I think, are gone, that's.
Yes, yeah, no, tonight, it's great, it's probably a very fortunate.
It's a pretty area to have.
It is, it's, yeah.
So, for usual, we have to set questions, we have to hear you, the first one is so tricky, why, why would you want to have a thing?
Yeah, I think, I think a combination of, of, um, me feeling very invested in, in this town, as I said, I have my children, four, three, and one, right now, um, very, very busy time in life, uh, but getting the opportunity to, to support the important work we do here, what, what attracted me to this town was the community here, and getting to have an influence over the way this town develops, I mean, even the three years I've been here, I've seen it, how, how, I'm sure every day you're balancing that, the balance of development and growth on one hand versus maintaining the spent community field that I'm talking about, and so, I feel that's so valuable, getting to, to have an opportunity to be involved in that, was so rewarding, and so that's, that's one. Two, I think I can bring a value, that's what I do every day, is reading and interpreting laws, contracts, and translating those for people that have no experience with it, and some that have plenty of experience with it, and you know, encouraging discussion, making tough decisions in the face of all that, that's what I do every day, and so, getting an opportunity to do that, but directed towards not my clients, but to the community I live in, would be, uh, both like a great value and be so personally rewarding as well, so, those I think would be the, the two, the two main.
And so, do you have any background experience with, with value?
I, I, I don't, no, never, uh, never served in the special.
No, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, right.
That's, that's sound, right?
I'm a transactional lawyer, so I, uh, I focus on like buying and selling companies, I, um, represent. Alright, yeah, exactly, that, and I also am outside general counsel, so to large or small, so. I, I like to think I'm the nicer kind of lawyer where I don't have to go and argue every day, so people are a little bit happier to see us than, than others, yeah.
Probably true.
It's a little bar though.
I mean, I don't know where it's at, wait, um, so what issues do you see facing us here, situates, such a new year, I'm just getting a new person to be trusted here?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a small sample size, but, and, and not to keep going back to it, but I, I do think, um, just, just sitting here for a few minutes here, I mean, that, I don't think the right answer is to, you know, run away from growth or not, not let that happen, but how, you know, I don't wanna just be another town that's a cutter town with a bunch of soulless, large, you know, apartment buildings or, or chains or wherever it may be, I, I think it's, how do you direct and encourage growth, but maintain what we have here, and, and, and part of that too is housing, I mean, part of what I love here is that the people help me, you know, that the contractor, my home is the person I see at the beach and at the restaurant, I live in the community, you don't see that much anymore in other places I've lived at least, and so, you need to have a community that can house the very people that, that, that work in it as well, and so, I think those types of, the kind of pushing pull of all that is, you know, I'm sure that's what I've been dealing with for, for some time, I imagine that's, that's what they're facing me.
To see a new place, so, what would you like to help us do as a, as, as a team, what would that?
I, I think just bringing my skills and what I do every day, but directing it here is what I think I, I could do to help, as I said, this is not, I appreciate it's a different subject matter that I'd be applying it to, but it's the same types of skills, and frankly, I'm, I'm a believer, I, I, you know, I'm kind of this is all, I'm just hiring my own, uh, colleagues and associates every, every day, what I look for is people that care and work hard, and that's what I, that's what I know I can bring regardless of the subject. So, um, you know, that's what I would hope to bring, bring to you all.
So of course, a lot of what we do is, uh, we recommend, so bylaws, it's a lawyer would be great to say he knows how to write, because. I know I worry, so I get you some of that, I don't worry with you.
Part of what I do.
So, um, so we have support changes, so bylaws, so, you know, nothing is static, it's without, it's not hard to feel. Also, as a newcomer, to change kind of to each other.
I, I am in support of it, but, but as I say cautiously, I, I chose to live here for, and it's because of the unique nature of it, and so, I think you gotta be careful and, and, uh, just, you know, growth or development or change for the sake of it is not the answer. Um, but I think, I imagine that bylaws, contracts, laws, regulations that are frozen in the moment in time, don't, aren't good fits for how, how things change, especially ones that I'm sure have been in place as long as these, so, um, yeah, I, I'm, I'm in support of it, but it's, uh, I believe in a very caution measure approach to it. Um, I, I, you know, the, the new bylaws for they use the, you know, this is the, the light reading I do, but, uh, but, um, yeah, I, I, I very much, I am in support of it, but in a, in a.
So this is an interesting one, so a new employee is totally opposed to your, your post development.
I, I am not surprised, the one's behind, I'm on the other side, actually.
This is a hypothetical.
It's a hypothetical, but you have read the application and bylaws and believe it meets all of the requirements, so how do you go about rationalizing it to other people about why you want to do it or just?
Sorry, so the, can you, the, the facts are that it's within the right, uh, but people oppose it.
Yeah, it's in the right. Still don't want, oh, it's different, it's new, we don't like it.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, it's, I'm, I mean, I, I face situations like this in my, my own job all the time, I'm a big believer in the value of just being heard, I, uh, you know, it feels even needed in like, you know, familial disputes, like the value of somebody being listened to is, uh, it's very important, and so, to me, I try to not take anything personally, but I think if you shut down somebody from voicing, even if, if you're completely in the right by the accordance with whatever bylaws or, or regulations that do something, I don't think the answer is to say, deal with it. Uh, at least that's how I try to live my life, I think it's important to hear what people have to say, and, and even if there's something, I'm listening to what you said about the fifteen units, but yes, you can do it by right, is that the right answer? I, I, it's not always, because you can do it by right, and if there's a conversation to be had, and I can do something that changes the way I go about a development that makes your life a little bit easier, you don't let the conversation happen, you can't find those ways to, to make everybody look unhappy, but yes, the biggest thing for me is letting people whoop her, is that, I think, goes along the way, even if you're not gonna do anything about it.
True, you have to listen, you have to, and everybody has something to say, in some place, there is, another, people, everybody has something to say. And I have said to you in the attorney class, don't tell me that I'm wrong, I would never tell anyone that they're wrong, I disagree, that, you know, I would never, ever tell anyone that they're wrong, because it's a good debate.
Exactly, I couldn't agree more.
So it's, uh, this place is a learning experience, trust me.
No, I, again, I've been here for thirty minutes or so, I can see it.
So, I guess, so what, what is your understanding of useful putting in practice that we do?
My, my understanding is that there's, you know, master.
Sorry, Ms. Lambert, I, I do believe we just lost you there real quick, and, uh, Ms. Burke or Ms. Baxter, just push that button on the screen there.
Thank you.
That's fantastic, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, so, uh, anybody that wants to, I'm sure, do anything of a certain type or character or size within the town, let's go to you, get, to get approval of that, and then.
Approval.
You say, okay, fair, uh, and then, yes, it's either, I'm sure squarely within what they're allowed to do by right, or it's not, I mean, the case of, of by right, I imagine there's still a process to go through that, every box is being checked to, to fit within that, that bucket, or if it's not, the approval process for waiver variance, et cetera, process to, and make an adjustment to those bylaws or regulations, so.
Well, you know, as we just went through, we should know the ADA unit, which was in bylaw at stake, we had a very successful ADA bylaw that had manipulated these states by law, but we were able to do that, very successful, like, so I have to tell you how we think, maybe, we know, we know.
I'm honest with you.
Uh, I have to tell you that this is a huge topic, um, the awesome member is fully inclusive member of this board, uh, their task, what we will vote task before in, in voting members about here, but we were including a lot of conversation, um, I speak to every single person, I just, every person has an opinion, we can listen to everybody, um, the town committee can be, can, can, can be a heavy, because it's also a word. I care, but I'm also possessive and I'm a liberian, so I spend about twenty hours a week, and that's my personality. Um, Ian's been doing this for a really long time, and he doesn't have to put in, I often have to ask, my first time I've asked him a question that I didn't understand, which is I don't understand how this happens, that Zoe may explain it because of your, the ass, the furniture, all the philosophy, and all the guys are, and Mark, if I have a week, I have a five.
I'm gonna be, I came on the last election, so.
Yeah.
So I'm still.
Still learning, yeah.
Well, you're over here, and so when you vote, you.
She.
Yeah.
It was last spring.
Yeah, a year ago, spring.
A year ago.
Yeah, a year, yeah.
So it's just, it's just a year, so like I said, so, uh, it would.
You can't play the piano.
No.
Oh, I choose to speak up.
Yeah, she does. Yeah, she does, yes.
That's good.
Um, so I guess the town committee is is a weekly every second and fourth Thursday. Uh, of the month, um, we have tons of paperwork and months, I, I sent to those homes. And we're all scheduled to give, you know, it's very difficult, we just have a lot of confusion.
She, so yeah, Karen sends out all the information and slowly, so you have the time to.
To turn back one.
Ask questions.
Homework.
Yeah, I guess it's homework. Yes, yeah.
It's kind of, you know, the way I was describing, is it's sort of. Detail level of of town planning, I think, because it's all project by project. We don't tell people the projects, but they agree with that, but we hope to try to manage that, really construct of uh, getting the bylaws. So we're, I would say this board deals a lot more details than most boards. So you you're getting on the lead, so it's bad, it's not gonna happen.
I was gonna say, I know, I know being in the way.
There are a lot of water in the lake and the action, and the joy, and the, and the awards, and that's, we deal with a lot of that. And we have a. I would, we would like to fill this position within my book, we do have three categories, we do have a bar of three categories, but. Um, and if and if you're not sure of any, feel free to always cast that net or apply, there's a million places we need, um. In in the town, if you know as much as I can tell, I mean, there's lots and lots of volunteer.
Yeah.
And we got not paid to remember people tell you.
We have been, we're on change.
We are on change all the time, we should have said, it's, like, so may not be, so we are gonna be. Volts, but it's, for for me, uh, I consider this, if you had to pick a board, I would say the board.
Yeah.
We write, we write a lot of, we shape the town, a lot of our resources that we use is, six of us. We care, we're very much, we 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 shape what the town looks like here, um. And we're all going to very, um. Have to discussion, we, uh, I'm not a believer in all these discussions, I I don't, but everybody, but we don't. The issue being is that I, we don't watch this, yes, we don't watch what board that we have, or who agrees with you. And so as a lawyer, I would be interested in, um, what you consider of our interest, if you're working in our power. Is that, is that an issue for us or what?
No, I I I checked, I also asked the same question to my own firm, if that would be an issue. I don't uh, represent a worker now, that this would be a long crossroad, I would certainly have to raise my hand if that ever did come up. But I would be very surprised, oh, in terms of where geographically my business is and also subject matter of it, if it ever, uh. If it ever came out to, uh, anything here.
Other great questions that you have for us in particular.
I was gonna, so, and and you touched on this a little bit, but an alternate member versus a full-time member, is this, or whatever, a board member. What is the difference? Is it, is it just that you're purely an alternate when somebody doesn't show up, is that really?
Like, like, we need to help to all.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure.
Because we, I, um, we, and I can be a stockholder also, I've been, that I did. See, we went off to.
See.
That is, so we're all on the same.
Okay.
No, no, it's uh. No, I think there's no difference, um, but uh, I hear a lot of people who think they only have to come when somebody hasn't showed up, but maybe don't know what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
That doesn't really help us.
There is a difference in decision, yeah, because the often doesn't have a vote unless one of the board members is not available, then it's expected, it's like an alternate jury. And it's expected that you would sit, you know, make those decisions, right? But you're still part of the, a baby board, if you will, and providing, you know, to the decisions that are being made. An alternate, you have to run and run for election.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
What then, what do you think of the people that have been successful or valuable, whether in this specific role of an alternate member or just in general, finding a board? Versus those who have not lasted long, or because their expectations were different, I don't know what it may have been, what is your?
I, I think this workload is one of the things that had people surprised, because, um, we, we are a month. But that's, that's just the tip of the iceberg, right, it's all the work in between to read, you know, the volumes of stuff that come through. You know, that kind of stuff, so it is a significant workload, I I would say that's surprise of people that came. And and the surprise that the victims accepted, they just didn't have that much free time.
That time, yeah.
Right, so. That is a little difficult, just being heard of.
That that's been, uh. The, you know, the last two people, well, chosen nine, but again, you know, it's a former board, it's an alternate, plus the town people, and shot, uh, they were.
The rest of us are just.
No, no.
Sorry, some funny stuff, yeah.
Which is lovely, but.
There you go, exactly.
But, yeah, that's, that's, that's a trick off, right?
But it is, I feel, for what for in this town.
That that was uh, when all of the positions, I think it was earlier in the summer, they publicized them. Like, my wife and I were looking at ones that we might wanna get involved with, and she's coming on the beautification, I don't know, probably, um. But I kind of said, if I was going to do this, I wanted it to be something meaningful, provided, not that there's anything, they're all meaningful and it's important to to get involved, but this one. Stood out to me, so it's not a surprise to me at all, I got the sense what you, what you described, it's exactly my question, what's.
Okay, the thing is, change is inevitable, it's the only constant we have. And so many, like, so many, many people don't want to change, and they don't understand, the moment they move to this town, they change, because they're in it.
Yeah.
So it's just, and it's important to understand that, and we try to listen to people, we don't always agree with them, but that's like.
And do you feel that you get respect much through outside of these doors, or do you, is this, you know, the work you do here ever kind of carry over into the community to some people not, you know, being too happy with the decisions?
It can be, well, I can tell you that it is, and I'm I'm a chair, that does not hold five ex parte meetings. So um, that 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 was a little difficult when I first came on, uh, that some developers were not used to that.
Yeah.
And they had a lot of time with that, um, I think. I think we're pretty cohesive, we're, we're, we're back to say the last two years or so, I think we gave a lot of respect, and I do, for people that. This year, we had had problems, uh, but we uh, we really held our line, and we really, and we deferred a lot of, I can. Part of the strategy.
And you know, you know, you actually want, definitely, you can't please them, it's.
Well, works it.
All the time, and there will be people who are gonna be upset, right?
That's the job.
That's part of the, and it just comes with the job, right?
Yeah, I think there's also a lot of um, misunderstanding about what we did for words too, and like the bylaws and the legal ramifications and. You know, restrictions sort of that we have, like, why do you allow that to be built, why do you allow, it's like, well, we're not allowing.
Exactly.
Like, it's by, like, it's like, there are laws, like, there's not, we don't sit here and say, oh, no, we don't want that.
We like you, but not you.
Yeah, we don't want that development to go, it's not.
We break that tree and.
Right, like, it's not a good idea, here, you know, there are laws, you follow laws, and if you don't follow laws.
And I think one of the issues is that, that we try really hard, well, I don't try really hard, is to separate us from zoning and what is planned.
Yes.
So a lot of what we get blamed for is zoning, which is, you have building, we're trying to, so that does not come forth, that's a zoning issue. So I got took, um.
But their problem in bylaws.
Yeah, yeah, follow nearby laws too, but people are often confused, like, when you said, it like, well, why do you allow that to be housed, well, definitely come to us.
Right.
What do you mean, did it come to you, well, most of the zoning, right, well, it's a, well.
And there's a, that's the plot.
I mean, we, we can influence somebody by proposing changes that go to town, right? But we can only propose if we can, we don't have, and that has to be voted, and you know, we, we've done a lot of that over the years. You know, some of, some of it has been accepted, a few have met.
You know, do meetings ever joint meetings or anything like that, or is it always, you're, you know, you're not meeting, we had the zoning board, you're meeting separately and proposing.
We, the only joint meeting that we have, we have in in the very near future is um. And the alternate member has to be a joint member, a joint developer select board, because it wasn't through an, not.
About.
But but normally, uh, the entire board is not reached, uh.
Joint areas with uh, on school, and we did that with the, I'm I'm.
I don't know, that was a long time ago, because they've been totally hybrid for over five years.
It was before that.
Yeah.
It was the high school.
Yeah, um.
Or the middle school.
Middle school, yeah, yeah, everything, that was it.
Yeah, so those kinds of products, right, town sponsored products, right, like the new elementary school, right? Which probably is quite a, uh.
And then, no.
They still need a site like approval for through planning to achieve, so we we see those kinds of products.
Exactly.
It can be.
Yes, I'm I'm sure, yes.
Yeah, it can be, I'd be very excited. Anyways, it didn't start, like I'm telling you, we, it is rewarding, it's like, we're gonna stop that, but, um. The only thing with that is we're always lost to town, I know.
I can remember standing on the board telling the overhead access dwelling thing.
Yeah.
At one thirty in the morning.
We don't do that.
And I have kids today.
Between my, my job and my children, one thirty in the morning getting up doing things is not, not unusual.
Well, I mean, there's nothing else, we will get back to, I, I, the person who I have to spoke with a lot of, so, but we can.
Great.
Very nice.
It'd be nice to meet you all, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
My love to sit in for the best question, it'd be great.
Absolutely, yeah, every meeting is awesome.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Okay, now, uh, you. So now we're gonna go to a um. A, a, well, a, a site, yeah, a discussion for the potential site change, I never should turn, so it's like, yeah, for Split Rock.
Split Rock is the closest to North.
It's not just here.
We're here.
You're in the hallway.
All right.
It's going, it's north city, yeah.
If I can speak, it would be.
We have Aaron as well.
I'm, well, I saw Aaron.
Hi, I'm here, I uh.
What's going on?
I don't know how to turn my video on, oh, I think I do.
That's okay, that's okay, we're there, there you are.
There I am.
There you are.
Yeah, okay, you are.
Hello, everybody.
All right.
I'm a little bit under the weather, so I decided to stay out, uh, stay uh, at home. And not get all sick.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I'll feel better.
I hope you feel better, so why don't you tell us what's going on through sixteen, I, I would like to stop calling James, at Split Rock.
James no more, yeah.
James at Split Rock, let us know, yeah, Split Rock.
Um.
Uh, yeah, I can give you a rundown, um, basically, as we.
Just identify yourself.
Oh, sorry, uh, Aaron Herman, owners of Split Rock.
I'm Ryan Hilton, co-owners of Split Rock.
Mr. Cutler is at home. Yeah.
Uh.
Hi, yeah, Aaron Cutler, owner, tenant owner.
Uh, so kind of as we've gone through the construction phase and kind of realized the layout of the lot, there's some things like. Pre usual during construction will come up that, um, we've realized that it might be good to alter, um, based on kind of functionality of the lot. Um, and one of those is the food truck location, so on the original site plan, we had, uh, basically planned for a cutout of the fence, kind of a long, more high Lincoln. So that food truck pull in and like open a kind of sliding barn door to access our catering, women with food trucks there. But with the property line, what we didn't really realize in the picture was how far over that cutout would need to be due to the property line. So it takes over a substantial part of the lot, and we really just come to the consensus that that would be detrimental to our space and our flow and our setup. Um, so our idea was then to reposition the location of the food truck. And have it be our coming through, um, Gannett and park along, like, parallel to Gannett in the front of the lot. Um, so we would move barrel, we'd have like some barrels, uh, like as a cutout essentially along more high Lincoln. Um, like the fence we'd still have, but we had about five barrels that are thirty seven uh inches high. Um, a little lower for like visibility, so people are going down the street and see around it, um, and we just moved those out of the way. So food truck pull in and um, be in that spot instead of having a cutout that is unusable space for our property, basically.
Can I ask, well, how how wide is your food truck? You see, just maybe you can contain it if you have now, that's the.
The, the average food truck is eight feet wide, uh, and they vary in lengths from about fifty to twenty three feet typically, um, depending on what they have in there.
Because my, my concern is that. If you're coming down what kind of your road, it's really hard to get out of the gap or anything. So how far do you have to creep out to get, you don't have to get out to get, to move around the truck, I guess, but that's, that would be my biggest concern.
It wouldn't be overhanging on the road at all, it would be completely on our line, so we would just have barrels that would like be within the lot that we'd move out of the way for when, when we would have food trucks, probably like. Once a week or once every two weeks, um.
Okay, so I guess my question, like, why do you stop the car, I guess we just.
Oh, same, yeah, you're saying, so when a food truck is there, will the, will it be visibility?
Yeah, 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 how is your sideline, you're leaning to the left?
Yeah, um, you, it's, it does. Yeah, I, I, we'd have to look at final measurements, my guess, it's gonna be, it's six feet off of the sidewalk. Which, so probably ten to twelve feet from the road, plus there's also parking spots there, uh, so when you pull up, I'm, it's quite a bit of space between even like our front fence. You get sidewalk and parking spots and then if it begins, um, so Mike, yeah, I don't know, and Aaron, I don't know if you have those numbers or can hold them easily on your computer, but um.
I can look up the uh, on the site plan.
Okay.
So. But that's why I, I ran this by the place, um, because I was concerned with site distance myself.
Yeah.
And um, you know, he was concerned with site distance too, but his initial reaction is he thinks the site distance would probably be sufficient. I mean. It's, it's kind of hard, it's kind of hard to challenge.
So it's not, so there's not a bit of food truck every day?
No.
No. No, we serve food out of the container, so this is only for like special occasion.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, so certainly not.
It's limited, limited.
Yeah, yeah, we just wanna make sure that we're all approved and it's, have your blessing, we'll make sure we got that through, we, you know, if we do decide.
Oh, I thought it was gonna, that was my concern.
And that's why we wanna make changes, because we, without having food trucks there every day, limiting our space in the restaurant, so this doesn't make sense.
We realize that how much it's actually taking up, so, um.
It's a small thing.
But it will be.
Yeah, especially when all the tables and stuff are.
I can't think of a question about that.
It will be like, if you're coming from Gannett, it'll be the first thing you see, if it's there.
It would be on the front of the lot, yeah.
It's gonna be on the front of the lot.
And it's gonna be adjacent to what kind of it, not the Brian, so it's gonna be a lot.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, I, I would say it's a limited thing, being once in a while, I think that's, I'm not sure I'd want it. To be first thing you see, Eric, right?
Oh, for sure.
Oh, I agree.
We, yeah, we wouldn't want that, I think.
But it would be better than weedies.
Sure.
With that. The weedies and the squash that would grow with it.
Yeah, it's my squash, they're better.
No, I'm not talking about that, I don't know about it.
Oh, I know. So and then you want to change, you want to use seashells instead of peace shells?
Correct.
I.
It's like, is it me?
It sounds fine together, but here, this is the last, better.
Just the aesthetic, the color, um, figured on the road to the beach.
Oh, we're gonna, we'll take them off the beach.
I, I ran that guy, um, Jennifer Vardo, and he thought it would be fine, it's like, it's the same depth as what the pressure.
I I ran that guy, um, Jennifer Vardo, and he thought it would be fine, it's like it's the same depth as what the fresh shell.
Right, yeah.
They think, I I have four foot crushed up, crushed out, or by the way, you can't do it, because you'd injure yourself.
Right.
Oh, no, yeah.
Yeah, it needs to be pretty thick.
Yeah.
It's a drag on the shells, like.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, uh, yeah, anything else, Karen? Um, no, so I I kind of, I didn't, I didn't get the chance to send motion out to the board. Uh, but I did, I did run a motion that basically says that crush stone, the crushed shells can be used. But ma- maintenance needs to be kept out to keep that required depth. Um. I did write, they want to move the bike rack location offsite, that's an absolute no, the bike rack location stays offsite. Uh, I did say that the food truck could move um to the front to the side. Um, I wasn't sure how you're gonna relocate the gate to make the site secure. And I kind of thought that perhaps that the food truck location needs to be evaluated at after the end of the first season. Uh. To verify the sidelines work and the location works for everybody. I mean, for for the site and for the town.
Let's consider the end of the first season, the center.
No, it's a. Of course, we can know that, right?
Yeah, no, that's that's fine.
And I mean, all other conditions of the site level, you uh could still remain here.
Yeah.
That's kind, that's the that's the highlights of the motion I I wrote.
Yeah.
That that sounds fine by me tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. When you. Well, your wife calls.
Yeah.
Should be for August fifteenth.
Yeah.
August fifteenth, that's the.
Perfect.
It's a whole.
Yeah, we're hoping, yeah, exactly.
So what I know.
Yeah, it's it's September and October, our summer, this month, so we're we're ready, we're.
Don't watch the show, Paul, that's your. I think the, okay, I gotta watch. The 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 wall.
Oh, Citu.
Citu.
Yeah. Erin, do you know when that fall is, Citu?
I don't know when that is, I'll ask the Carreras though, I'm sure they know.
Uh.
Actually, I don't.
Were you, Erin, were you thinking about opening uh like I would doing a one day thing for the for the personal?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so I mean, it will probably put this on your radar at some point, but um we'd love to be open for the stroll. For one day, so we need to just get approval for like a one day um title open.
What did you say, what stroll?
Oh, the the Situate stroll, it's like the Christmas, um, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It is, yeah, it was really cute last year, so I was like, yeah.
It's cold, it's a little warm.
You think I'll call?
We're gonna have a stroll, we've got much.
I'll have your press hat, so if you have kids, that would be ideal.
Hey, Miss Lambert, you do have a hand raised.
Ah, yes, Michelle, go, we'll help you.
Michelle, should we go on a mute? Let's go right ahead.
Yes, thank you, um, fall for Situate is October fifth.
Oh, perfect, thank you. Thank you, oh, nice.
Awesome.
Perfect, thank you.
It's during our, it's during our season anyways.
That's your decision anyways, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, are we ready?
We're ready.
Go for it.
Okay. I am able to approve as minor field changes. The split rock Situate site plan administrator will do five of the town work on April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, while. One, fresh seashells can be used in a fresh stone at the same depth of four inches as the detail required. Maintenance should be kept up to keep the required depth. Two, the bike rack location shall remain onsite and not be moved into town right away. Three, food truck location can be changed to the front of the site by Gannett Road with access to Mordecai Lincoln Road. Five twenty two inch wide wine barrels shall be placed at the corner of Gannett and Mordecai Lincoln Roads to provide access to the food trucks. The change is designed to optimize the lot layout, guest use and overall functionality while accommodating trucks effectively when present. Theoretically, there should be sufficient sightlines, the gate should be relocated to make. The gate secure, the location of the food trucks shall be evaluated after the first season to verify that the sightlines work and the location is good. For the site and the town, all conditions of the site plan I do will uh remain in full effect. Your second, second. I'm in favor.
All right.
Hi.
There you go.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, see you soon.
Thank you all, good luck.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you, I feel better.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, we have a pause, send it out tomorrow.
All right.
Okay, okay, no, it's this, no business, you have a good one, any minutes?
Minutes.
Minutes.
Okay, um. Fourth meeting minutes of July tenth, twenty twenty five.
So, yeah. I'm in favor.
Hi.
Did you spend any money?
No.
No.
Do not spend any money on the clock.
Oh, fine, okay, I know, so. Yeah, so I have one.
I have one, okay. I had went to CPC and talked about stuff. Um, they took off the town archives applications for drawing this CPC campaign or whatever. Keeping up with the digital, no, it's not historical.
Oh, oh.
Then the yearly, yeah, one, it's the.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah.
And then, um. Let's see.
I don't know why the library came to you, right, that's me to get.
The dish pan, that's the, that's the property on um Flat Road, and there have been several.
Yeah.
I don't know what that property is.
It's over on, um.
Nobody else, I believe, yeah, um.
And go over here, um. So that's what they would do with that property. Because they want to sell it.
Divide it?
No, not divide it, it was two property owners, they would like the town to buy it. And we've had two, actually three, uh, appraisals on this property, sixteen acres of land. Seven hundred thousand lots. So.
Yeah, there's to be like a bushel here, I have no idea.
At any rate, um, we have a special meeting on Wednesday, the thirtieth. The board will decide what they want to do or not as space may be. Also, two, what else did we do? There was an application for the GAR hall for lighting, and I think that's something to include, and then. The Mordecai Lincoln House application, one hundred twenty five thousand to deal with, um. Structural whatever stuff from where, yeah, so anyway, that's what's like with, um.
It's pretty funny.
Oh, there's one other thing, no, there's one other thing, this gentleman by the name of Steve Norrie came to see us.
Oh, yes.
You know who he is?
I know.
Okay, he involves the cranberry hog up on Old Open Bucket Road and.
You know, it's special, right?
Whatever.
In your fast food, so.
Something, the seventy five acres, a ton of water.
Up on West Side.
Uh, it's up on Old Open Bucket.
Right.
On.
Yeah.
We're all getting one, so, yeah.
Yeah, thoughts?
Yeah.
Okay, and so I suggested that um there'd be a sit down with the water. Resources, um. So I mean, you could just recruit people to decide what they want to do with this property. I know years ago, a number of people wanted to look at. The water from the bog going into the reservoir. And that got mixed. So, I mean, one of the questions that has to be considered was when the bog was created in upland or wetland? That's a big, that's a big question, yeah. But and I don't know the wrong swing yet. Well, but I mean, if if it was wetland, that then, you know, it's a different thing, if it's not land, then, you know, it's a different answer too. So, we'll see what happens.
But so is he trying to get the town to buy it and keep it undeveloped?
Is he trying to sell it? Yes. Well, what?
Is that what I'm, is that what I'm saying?
I think so, but I mean, is he, is he looking for the town to buy it and if somebody else maintain the perimeter going? Because perimeter's, perimeter stuff will fill it, and if you dump uh anything, then. We don't, we only own this one small section that he is.
It's like seventy five acres of something?
Seventy five acres, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, he, we're all creators.
No, because it's too far away from Ocean Spray, it's not worth it. Plus he and his partner are, um. Agent, and they have one supply, they have one spot Florida and they get, nor nor you see her.
Yeah.
And he lives in one house on, oh, those houses that were homemade, or.
Oh, are you like, one of the one?
Yeah, so. Okay, just tell me.
Oh, interesting question.
You get to look at it and determine those. What resource or not.
Well, Karen, what would be the difference if it was from what is supposed to be wet?
If a bog was created in upland, it would fill that.
Oh, I see.
I mean, that's what, that's exactly what happened in Norway with, you know, the primary company. He had built some bogs in the upper part and asked for that new subdivision to fill. And some of the bombs down below were in areas that were, well, they were there for, I don't know, they were there when I was growing up, but some of them. One of the newer ones, it was, it was wet down.
The way you go for it, it's a whole question.
No, but I guess it's a tremendous amount of water up there, springs and whatnot. So.
You have somebody on the frame, right?
Right up.
I believe they're trying to get a meeting together with, um, you know, the water department, CPC, um.
Yes.
Select Board, um, for everyone to discuss this, um, location. Um, I was just curious if anyone had looked at the, um, GIS maps and and seen if we have Aquifer under it? I'm not sure of the actual location of this parcel, so I haven't done it myself, but is there an Aquifer under it?
We don't know, I have no idea.
That would be hopeless.
Do you know, do you know the address?
Um, know where they are. It's the address.
It's one, it's a one ninety on Open Bucket, it's still south of New York.
Okay. Off the road.
I, it might be in the Water Resource Protection District.
That's what I, it's all online.
I I would think it is. I mean, and I remember there was some. I, when I was going back through some notes, basically on Water Resource Protection, I think it was came up when, um, the town.
Yeah.
Changed the zoning in two thousand fourteen, so, um, about some of the, some of the outlets or something to there.
That's all I'm thinking.
Says something like six hundred thousand gallons of water a day go to the pelvertine down into the ocean. The only ones on.
Well, yeah, we need to be a discussion.
Those others, yep. All right.
Um, do we actually have to make that discussion, water laws?
Yes.
I just think it's interesting.
All right.
You know, I'm, it's kind of environmental now, but I think, you know, it's, I think that, you know, I think probably.
Okay.
It's probably something that's not gonna get decided very quickly, you know.
Not, not, it's. Okay, all right.
And we'll make sure they get your other list, uh, did I talk about my zone thing or not?
Before, yeah.
Okay, so, um. In February of March, uh, I wrote a letter to Mr. Goldwood. For fighting about this local gas station on three A, and asked him to, um, look into the permit and what they enjoyed wasn't appropriate. Um, what the number was, he's supposed to be to get that, and he, um, issued them a violation notice. Which they get a PH.
What were they violating?
What were they doing?
They have, um, a what kind of business is up there? And what their obligations as a landscape.
Who is?
Not their owner. And in the right hand corner, um, the state issues that is stage a year with like a interim building project. So, it's quite messy up there and it was quite unattractive, so, um. Went to the first meeting and, um. There was a lot of hearsay about what they could and could not do, uh, and there was no decision made, uh. They need some more information. Uh, I wrote yet another letter to the local board to tell them that, um, I had one who I had asked permission to look at the near maps. Essentially, which we don't have access to, and I can trace all the way back to two thousand four, they were trying to tell me that. They had chosen everything up there from the early two thousands at all the way back to nineteen eighty nine, which was much worse. Um. And it very, I also, I had comments of the nineteen thirty six and nineteen fifty eight bylaws, it clearly tells you, you cannot have a landscaping business on three A. Um, I went to the last meeting and has now been continued until August, so we'll, we'll see what happens.
And that was only.
It's okay, yeah, we are clear violation of the land management.
The administration on further.
I had to write a little letter about that. I wrote a letter about that.
Was it Kennedy's or Trump's?
No, this is Kennedy's, this one on.
This is that ponderoso, you know.
Kennedy's is a marginal landscape, I mean, they do, but the utility there is a greenhouse.
Kennedy's. Kennedy's got really years ago, years ago, I mean, so years ago, so this is, this is a different.
Yes.
This is kind of near the reservoir, actually, they made mounds there, but I mean, but not enough, I mean, so I, of course, I go by there, I could see the air, it was four times a day. Um, Steve Rich has moved his company from Redwood.
Right.
To, to Chief Justice Christian Highway, um, with piles and, you know, they're making models, you know, all kinds of stuff, they're working on landscaping for them. So, uh, it'll be interesting to see what they come back with, uh, they ask for a ten minutes because I think they try to find a way to, they can leave it. A lot. So, like right now, he's collecting grain from three different. Uh, which is also kind of detailed, it's there as well. So, it's a one kind of business, a landscaping business, and a kind of detailing, none of which he has a permit for. He has a permit for gas station and a two bay garage that is kept nineteen sixteen H. As all that's all the time I have to. Karen?
All right, so, I think, I don't remember if I sent the email or not, but, um. The AG asked for a sixty day extension during due, our A U seventy five.
Okay.
Now.
Yes, they, they had a complaint.
From? Mister Terrell.
Oh, I didn't know.
And so they asked for a sixty day extension and unfortunately, they have to rest sixty days. Town council was in the process of writing a response to Mister Terrell's, um, complaints. That, you know, that the AG provided the town. So, um.
Always means done, I mean, do we?
Absolutely not, no.
So what is the?
He didn't want to pay the fee.
Oh, too bad.
There, there's a number of things.
You did everything, but that was.
There's a number of things that we had talked about, um, when we were doing the bylaw and we discussed things in town council, and town council, the lot. Everything that we kept in our bylaw, they could back up a hundred percent. So, you know, I'm just, we're waiting to see, um, but, you know, I'm just letting, you know.
No, I went by to look at that to see where it was, and, uh, you can't see that from head to toe. Uh, this is standard tributes, so you have to go right onto people that go up a little bit, a little way to be able to see it, it's, it's probably heavily treated out there. So, it's not unattractive, it's, it's, it's a national advantage.
I, so, I, we.
But what were the complaints?
Uh, so I think he shouldn't have to do a restricted coverage, that he shouldn't have to apply for a permit, he, um, you know, shouldn't have to pay a filing fee. You know, of of a number of things like that.
And he doesn't live in town? He owns property, yes, so.
He owns property, but he doesn't live in town, and so he's town council, you're smart. I think so.
Well, that would be impressive, yeah. People would be referring Situate versus.
So, it's, I mean, there's an A U seminar coming up on, I mean, on the thirteenth of August, and, you know, um. Some of the stuff, some of the links in the website that, you know, it came through, um, you know, start with cases. That, you know, that were, the AGs already decided, you know, quite lengthy decisions, but most of the ones that I.
But most of the ones that I read were all before the bylaw came out, they, they were last fall, so, of course. You're gonna, you know, people trying to say, oh, it's like the same thing, no, well, no, you can't do that. So, I mean, it's, it'll be, it'll be interesting.
But why, why does she need anyone have to pay a filing fee, and we have to do it?
But then there's, you know, he's saying there's gonna be a fee for, for doing a restricted covenant, and you already say you can't at children rentals, so why do you need a covenant? Well, you know, when I asked town council about how much it costs, the cost for covenant, two hundred bucks, is two hundred bucks unreasonable?
No.
So, that's what I guess, I mean, so.
You don't realize how are we gonna get the fee?
Yes, I'm not.
Are we gonna be?
Really? The big bucks that we, that we owe.
The big bucks that we get, no, I haven't.
All right, so, do you want to do the third interview for the last guy?
I think this one.
That'd be, I think he sounded good.
Uh, I think so.
If you don't wanna do the interview, then I think we can get on, uh, the select board ag- agenda, I think, um, I just fit. Yeah. Very, very, I mean, we're keeping in close tabs, um, because we're gonna have some projects, so. We're gonna have some projects coming out where we probably might want to alternate. I mean, we're not as busy as we were, but we still have, we have stuff coming out.
We love the stuff.
We love the stuff, so, I don't know, do you want to, what do you wanna do to do that?
That works for me.
Laura, how do you feel about the second one?
Oh, I feel, this is open.
Yeah. We're discussing openly.
Okay, um, yes, I feel like, I, I think he's a very solid.
Yes.
Um, I think we should move forward, but I can't, because I'm already, it's, it's, frankly, frankly. Like to another board.
Yeah, so, it has to be, it's a joint meeting with the select board, it's a roll call vote, so everybody has to attend.
On August the, yeah. I can't, I couldn't do it on the fifth.
I'm gonna be in higher.
Okay, so then, fourteen days, so it was fourteen days.
I'm sorry, but this is, this is for my summer, yeah.
So, August.
So, the time change, everything.
Right, yeah, um, just, can any, can anybody do it later in the month?
Whatever you want.
I can do any other, like, early.
What is Cusco?
Uh, we have the, we have meetings, the twenty seventh, twenty eighth, with the kids, and start a lot of the later date, but that's.
All right, so if I send you the, the dates the select board is meeting, um, can you tell me if you can make it, not make it? Because obviously, you, we made our recommendation to the select board, but obviously, we wanna have the same amount of votes, you know, right? And, all right, so.
I can do the twelfth of twenty second, so.
So, the.
I can't do the nineteenth.
Yeah, then the fifth and the nineteenth, select board.
You can't do the nineteenth?
Nope.
I can do the nineteenth.
You can't do a Zoom at all?
We can do a touchscreen.
Oh, yeah, we can't do that, okay, I'd like to ask.
That's gonna be the great thing.
Yeah, I wish I could.
I would, I, I would, if I could change it, I would.
No, no, that's. So, select board needs the, the nineteenth?
Yeah, and then the, I have a calendar, just handle it from there, and then they meet, uh, September ninth.
See, that just pushes it way out.
It does push it way out. To September.
Yes, the whole board can, can just be one of them.
No, it's.
No, it has to be, you know, they're both, I mean, so, if we're pretty sure that the select board is gonna take our recommendation, then we could go with the gift.
Oh, we have, we have two people.
I might be able to join the vote.
I'm ready, yeah.
Good.
But more can, so, but that's, I think.
Yeah, more, that I, I mean, I would do a remote, but I don't think Maryland's, I have hours. Like, right.
Stand up, all right.
I'll send it to you in the first week.
I know, that's my fault, it's British.
You'll still be, you'll still be.
I don't know what, and we have a wedding.
Oh, well, that, that's what I'm sure, I'll, you'll be.
All right, why don't I try to work an hour and, you know, we'll see, if we can get, do you wanna proceed if you can get four people?
Yes.
Yes.
I will, probably won't know, I mean, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna send Rebecca an email until next week.
Okay. Uh, you just let us know.
Okay, we'll be there, all right, so.
So, I can do the nineteenth, but.
Well, if I send you an email, we can respond to.
I can do the.
Yeah.
But you could remove on the fifth, right?
I think I can, I have to look at it, it's unattractive, so.
Yeah.
Depends where I'm gonna be and.
I'm gonna be in the west end of Situate.
I'm gonna be in North Situate, that's my only.
All right, so I'll send an email, uh, if you guys let me know, so, if there's, I'm pretty much right away, then, then, try to get it.
Yeah.
I'll send it Monday, I have a site visit tomorrow, and I just have other stuff.
But you, something should, we need to go on here or? You just did.
We just.
Oh, yeah.
We have the.
We have to make an official motion?
We're just, we're just gonna make the.
You're gonna make, you're gonna make the recommendation to the select board, that you would like to, you would like to offer, uh, the, to, to still pushing, and.
Right, right.
That's the, that's the motion, yeah.
Um, that, and the, the actual vote is at the, the select board, the, the joint meeting.
Okay.
Do you think we should call them tomorrow to be more, sign up for somebody else?
Yes.
I can send an email.
We'll send you to, we'll send an email.
Great, okay.
Right there.
So, anything else?
Okay. About a motion to.
So, move.
Love favor.
I.
Hi, thank you.